By Girl Scout Troop 32906.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay. Let's have the roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Houck.
Here.
Mr. Morelli.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Present.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Urban. Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. McGinley. Ms. Wakis.
Present.
We're going to start off tonight with the recognition and ceremonial proclamations. And I think Mr. Morelli presented this proclamation, did you not?
Yes.
On election night, actually? And I'm just, I'm going to read it to you because I think it's a great idea. Whereas Samsung Productions, SSP TV, the LaSante family is celebrating 25 years of local news and programming. And whereas what sets SSP TV apart from any other regional, excuse me, news station is the fact that this TV station was and continues to be run by a family, the LaSante family. And whereas it all began January 5th, 1994, when the first ever local news debuted in the Hazleton area. Your local news 13 was a dream come true for Sam LaSante, senior CEO. Local news had been dreaming of Sam's for many years. He felt there were so many great things happening in our area that providing the community with local news and local programming would show off the town. And whereas in the present 2019, SSP TV is now in high definition. And on social media, on YouTube, it has a new website focused on their niche, which is telling longer local stories about people from the area and about community-minded events. And whereas SSP TV has always been community-minded and has supported many great causes over the past 25 years. The main ingredient that has kept SSP TV a successful TV station is family. The LaSante family is also very grateful to the community in which it serves, the dedicated sponsors and their faith in God. The vision for the future is to keep up with technology, explore the World Wide Web, and stay involved in the community. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, dear hereby honor, applaud, congratulate Samsung Productions, SSP TV, the LaSante family, on 25 years of local news and programming, and extend our sincere appreciation and best wishes for their continued success and all future endeavors. Congratulations, Samsung Productions, SSP TV, the LaSante family, celebrating 25 years. Thank you for presenting that. Okay, moving on. Do we have any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Yes, Ms. Houck?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to remove item, well, the only item, the retirement board appointment. As it's late in the day and that would be, I mean, late in the game for that appointment. It would only be for a six-week period. So I make the motion to remove it from the agenda.
We have a motion. We need a second, if anyone agrees. Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. We need to vote, don't we? Oh, we can do all in favor? Can we do all in favor? Let's do all in favor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Say nay. Okay. It passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Houck. So let us move down to public comment. Oh. Okay, yes, now we have to adopt the voting session agenda, which... I don't believe we have a voting session agenda. Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry. We have the minutes. Yes. So...
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Passes. Okay, now we're ready for public comment on voting session agenda items. None from the audience? Now's your chance. No? Okay. All right. So we're moving on to new business. The clerk of council, motion to approve minutes of the October 22nd, 2019 voting session. Do I hear a motion?
Present.
Second from Sheila Sedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Urban?
He is not verbatim, that's all.
Okay. All right. Passed. Motion to approve minutes of the October 29th special voting session. Do I see a motion? Ms. Houck?
Second.
Second. Mr. Bo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Urban?
I am not verbatim.
Is it not verbatim? Minutes pass. Okay. Now it's time for public comment. Do we have Ms. Davies here? On non-agenda items? Okay.
I was here last month. You might remember me. I am Ann Davies. I served on the election board and I was on the advisory committee for the voting machines. And I'm here to speak again on the voting machines. And I only have three minutes and I think I'm hyperventilating, so bear with me. But, one week ago today, we all voted. I want you to picture your polling place. How many Ivatronic machines you had there? I have five in mine. And if we have new machines, and I'm going to go through both of them, and if we have ESNS as our voting machines, when you walk into your polls, mine being five, I will see five ballot marking devices on a stand. The ballot marking device will contain the thermal printer. It will contain a six-pound, six-hour backup battery. And... And, and I'm trying to think. Anyway, and one machine will handle all of that. It'll be your ballot marking device, your backup battery. You'll vote. You'll put your paper in. You'll do it very much like you do now with the Ivatronics, so it won't be a lot different. You know, you'll go page to page to page. When your ballot comes out, and I'm simplifying it. I'm not doing poll books. We all know how the poll books work. You will step over and you will put your ballot in a scanner. The scanner with ESNS will take 120 to 180 ballots an hour. You will have two pieces of equipment. You'll have your ballot marking device on a stand and a scanner. Two plugs to plug in for your poll workers. Okay. Now we move ESNS out and move Dominion in. When you walk into your polling place, I will have five, five square tables, like a cube. And I can't remember, I just saw them for the first time last month, whether they're two-by-two or three-by-three. Your ballot marking device will be sitting on it. Your printer, which is the commercial off the shelf, just like you might have at home, will be sitting right underneath it. There will be a, and this is my favorite thing, there will be a 54.23-pound backup battery. So you're plugging in the battery and the printer and the ballot marking device, and you do the same thing. You'll vote. Your printer will print your ballot. You will take it to a scanner, just like the other ESNS. You put it in. That machine will take 30 ballots an hour. 30 an hour. Dominion thinks that for the 180 precincts that we have, we need one scanner for each polling place. I don't know about you, that won't work in mine with five ballot marking devices. I don't know whether you've checked with other counties and how they voted, but I have been Googling newspapers all over the county. I can say Philadelphia, they have ESNS and they bought the big, expensive, beautiful machine. We never even gave it a thought. You didn't hear a thing about Philadelphia. 1,700 precincts. Nothing. And I went looking, I'm looking to find things. Northampton County, same thing. Big expensive machines. They did have an issue and it was a programming problem. Because their end-of-night machine with the SNS is so fast and so good, you never heard about delays in counting, getting the votes to the press. It never, it never occurred. York County, because I'm moving right along. York County was different. York County has Dominion. They have paper ballots. It doesn't matter whether you have paper ballots or a ballot marking device. It's the same scanner. It's the same 30 pieces of paper per hour. And this is something that the county spokesperson, and I know Mr. Pedry would never want to say this, Mr. Parsnick, if he's here, would never want to say this, and neither would any of you. The county spokesman said, "One machine..." I gotta get my breath, I'm really hyperventilating. "One machine per polling place was simply not enough to move smoothly. The scanners do not appear capable of handling the volume." The president of the commissioner said, "For the next election, we'll be looking at more scanners and maybe condensing polling places." And the chairman of the Republican Party, and we know it's all partisan too, but it's the only one I have, he said, "The commissioners simply did not provide for enough scanners. They better get more machines next year or they're going to have a disaster." And Dominion did not respond to a request for comment. So when I'm here to absolutely talk about ESNS, we had three companies provide, oh, all sorts of information. Oh my, I'm living in a fire trap. I have paper all over the place. I have voted on all the machines multiple times. Dominion would never work for us. It was never even considered. It, Hart was too expensive, it had an extra step. And I now think of you, Ms. Houck, whenever I think of the ethics, because I know how you feel about it. It was something we were always aware of, always, 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 because we knew it was going to be a hard sell. But it's the only company that works. Works well, works properly. They have been also, I, I think it's a...
Ma'am, I thank you. I believe you've made your point and...
Okay. I could go on.
Your time has...
I was, one, just one thing. For some of you, this will be your legacy vote. This is what you'll be remembered for, so please think about it.
Thank you so much. Okay. Fred Javer. No? How about Brian Shiner? Joe McCabe, surely, Joe?
Yeah, tonight I'm here, right before the election, I heard a rumor. Maybe one of the lobbyist members will be here. Is anybody here from the lobbyist group? Dave, maybe you can answer this question for me. West Wyoming received a grant from Mohegan Sun. Are you aware that they received a grant to our lobbyist group?
No.
You're not aware of it? Like, do you get information on when they receive a grant from the lobbyist group?
No.
Through Mohegan Sun?
No.
Because they said that they took $8,000 out of the grant for the lobbyist group. Now, we paid them so much a month and I can't believe that they take a percentage out of the grant if it's our group that did it. So could you do a little research and find out?
I'm not aware. You're saying the lobbyist group that we have is the same lobby?
Well, I don't know if they did it or not. I didn't do enough research on it. I will do a little to find out if it's our group or...
I'm trying to get the facts. You believe the lobbyist group that represents us represents West Wyoming as well?
Well, no. What I'm saying is, West Wyoming received a grant from Mohegan Sun through a lobbyist group. But I'm not 100% sure if it's our group or not. I was just wondering if anybody's aware that it was our group that got the grant or not.
I don't believe they represent West Wyoming.
No? Okay. And if I find out, I'll be back next month or something?
I'll find out, I'll find out.
Yeah, because like I said, they get so much a month for, from the county and I can't see why they get a percentage from the grant, you know?
I believe we're the only municipality in Luzerne County that they represent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. These are all the slips we have. Is there anyone else who'd like to make some public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Urban and Ms. Sedman, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. And we are moving on to the work session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Mr. Morelli?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Bo?
Here.
Mr. McGinley? Ms. Wakis?
Present.
Okay. Adoption of work session... Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any deletions, additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Number five.
Number five. Discussion regarding resolution providing tax exemption?
Yes.
Okay. Remove? Anything else?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Remove number five?
Number five.
I'm sorry. Just wanted to move that one?
Number five.
Number five. That's a matter that should be decided by the incoming council.
Okay. Could I just ask, I want to make sure, because there is a question I do have and an issue. Does that have to do with the land down in Dallas? It's not, okay, was it Lurda?
This is Lurda.
Is that the Lurda?
Yes. The Albert Lurda. Hanover Township, I believe. Yeah.
What's that?
Hanover Township.
I'm sorry, I said Dallas. It's Hanover Township? Okay. Why, can I ask why it should be put onto the next council?
Because it's not a central government function. And right now, we're in a lame duck council. And that's a decision that needs to be made by the council in January of 2020.
Well, ma'am chair, can I, since we're bringing this up, can I make a comment on this?
Yes.
Since it's a work session?
Absolutely.
Whether we vote on this or not, this was an item that I got a call from, from someone actually in the state police. And like in the past, I've supported incentives in the county. Because again, I think incentives do help bring in business. But again, it's been a controversial issue out there. And so like anything else, just like this lady who came up to the podium, people bring information in front of you that you're not always aware of. And I think that's good. So I got a call from a state trooper who is from Wyoming barracks. And they have a concern of the fact that if, correct me if I'm wrong in anywhere, if anyone knows anything, I don't, but I believe the barracks in Wyoming is supposed to be moving to Hanover. And the concern is, and this is coming from a state trooper who's on the street, saying the fact that, you know, he doesn't really, what matters to him is being able to get to the endpoint. And when you take a look at the information as to where most of his calls are coming from, they're in the Exeter, Pittston area, et cetera. And, you know, when I, when he was talking to me, it made, well, what came to my mind is we're spending over $20 million on a 911 system to get our first-in-lives out there faster. And so, you know, again, this was some gentleman who mentioned to me the fact of, you know, by moving that, that, their barracks to Hanover Township, it's going to take them longer. And I didn't realize this either, but I don't know if many people do, but apparently Luzerne County has three state police barracks, which I think is pretty good. And, you know, maybe there's rumors out there. I don't want to get into rumors of possibly consolidating down the road. But when you do take a look at where that would be and where the other two would be, one is Hazleton, one is, I think, Chikshin. Who knows? But I don't represent the state, I represent the county. And I thought he made a lot of sense. And again, I don't know this gentleman personally, but he did call me up just to bring this to my attention because it was a concern of his. And he made it sound like there was concern of other individuals. And I did send an email out, actually, to Mr. McGinley at one time, asking if maybe the state police could even come here to speak on this. So this is why I'm asking the question. And again, all, I really don't have a dog in this fight, other than something making sense and mentioning to the state trooper that I would speak out on behalf of it and bring it to the attention of everyone else. So if we don't vote on it, that's fine. But I do want to bring it to the public's attention. Again, if you're living in Pittston area, Exeter, I can tell you this. If I was living in Hazleton and they were moving my barracks, I'd be concerned. And I don't know if the people in Pittston and Exeter and all those areas up there know this and are aware of this. And I guess the other question is, the fact that it's Lurda, why are we giving out an incentive if they already have the business coming in? So again, I'm just asking, if we don't vote it on, it's fine. But I'm going to ask all of you or any of you who are going to be coming on to this, please look into this because I think it's a concern. So I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention.
Well, I'm glad you brought the subject up. Now, we've stricken it from the agenda, but one of my questions was going to be, I'm assuming this is still the case, that the gas, major portion of the gasoline tax that we pay at the pump is indeed not going to repair roads and bridges, but is being funneled to the state police. Now, I admire the state police. We need the state police. Where I live, we have no local police department. We rely on the state police. However, however, that being said, if the state police has money, why would they send someone here? Or why would the, I'm assuming it's the contractor? Why would that person come here and ask for a tax break? That makes no sense at all. Yes?
If I could just suggest, if we're going to have the discussion on it, why don't we just leave the discussion on the agenda and have the discussion at point number five? Because we're not going to vote on it. I mean, certainly, I agree that we're not going to vote on it. But if we all want to have a discussion about things that have been brought to us or about different things about it, let's just keep it on the agenda.
I agree. Yes. Okay? That's fine.
Can I make a motion to adopt the agenda without removing number five?
Yes, you may. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is passed. Okay. First item, the monthly division reports. I believe they're in front of us. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I am, we're quickly reviewing our agenda, our division reports, as we do every month here with county council. Some things I would highlight, and then I would open myself up for questions if anybody has any. Preferably for the corrections or operations, all, because they're all here tonight and they're all ready to go. So, one thing I wanted to bring to the council's attention is on page 10, and that's the office of coroner. Obviously, Mr. Hughes, our previous coroner, resigned very quickly and left a void in that office. We were able to appoint Jack Robshaw. And I want to thank Jack for his flexibility as he stepped up to assist in that, in that, in that position. He was in that position for a couple of weeks before we just made a hire about a week and a half ago of Frank Hacken for this position. But you'll see the monthly activities, that we had seven autopsies performed, 50 coroner reviews, 131 cremation permits issued, 12 gynecology kits mailed. During that time, when we had some changeover in that, in that department head level, we were still doing business as needed and kept moving that, that office forward. So I want to thank both Mr. Robshaw and Mr. Hacken for their hard work during this timeline. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I know Harry's on the phone, is on page 17. But Chase Road is an item that we have discussed in this room numerous times regarding Chase Road. When's it going to be fixed? When does it have to be fixed? I'm thrilled to say that this project is currently complete and will be removed from this list on the next update. So that project has been completed. We've been working with PennDOT on that project for some time. That's on the PennDOT tip project. And the Chase Road in the Back Mountain is now currently completed from where we're at. Other projects that will be removed is the one right underneath it on page 18, the Hollenback Township Bridge Replacement Project, as well as the Superstructure Replacement Project in Cunningham Township, also on page 18. The final thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is the courthouse interior restoration project, phase two. This is the completion of the first floor and the beginning of looking at some of our courtrooms here in the courthouse. As council is aware, council made a major capital investment by fixing the Luzerne County rotunda in 2017 and last year, moving forward with phase two. If you walk around the first floor and you'll see, when we do the presentation of the before-and-after photos, you'll see the amazing work that's been done by Evergreen and how beautiful this courthouse truly is. Our weddings are up throughout the year. And I want to thank our Billion Grounds crew for what they do every week as well. I love to see in the spring, the high schools are out here taking pictures of the prom. I want people to use this courthouse more and more. And as you can see, these renovations are really paying off and they really are standing out. Evergreen will be present at an upcoming meeting. We're going to go over before-and-after pictures for county council, so they can see where we've, where we've been and what we have right now. With that being said, I'll be open for suggestions or questions.
Any questions for the manager?
Ms. Chair?
Yes? Mr. Haas?
Hey, Dave, I'm smiling, listening to the phone. Thank you. And hats off to you and Mr. O'Neill and the staff.
Chase Road, Harry, you did it.
I was just a cheerleader, but thank you very much for that. Other question to the coroner's office. Today here, we've hired now a full-time coroner?
Correct.
Was that correct?
Yes. We've hired a full-time coroner, Frank Hacken.
Okay, there you go. Welcome to Mr. Hacken. At the point's moot then, I just hope that, I know there was some concern that the coroner was not able to perform autopsies himself prior. And just want to make sure that we can continue to do that.
Yeah, listen, I would love for the coroner to perform autopsies. I've seen Quincy too. And I think that's, I mean, like, and we've had that, we've had that for quite some time. When we had Dr. Tudak was the medical examiner. I would love for the coroner to be able to perform autopsies. It's hard getting a doctor to take a $60,000 a year job from where we're at. I, we, obviously, when Mr. Listman was in there, he was not able to perform autopsies. Mr. Hughes was not able to perform autopsies and neither is Mr. Hacken. But we would obviously work with our forensic examiners in order to do this. I believe we're working with, you know, Dr. Ross, as well as some forensic pathologists who were trained in the Lehigh Valley as well.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and I shouldn't be ignorant after eight years on as council, but do you need a medical degree to perform an autopsy? Or could we secure extra training for staff to do that?
No, you're going to need a medical degree for that. That's a forensic pathologist.
Yeah, I fear as much as well. Okay, thanks.
Send me to medical school, I'll come back.
We're not sending Ramella to medical school.
Thank you.
Dave, I asked, actually, since we're talking about the division, just a recommendation regarding the budget. Something I realized last time and I thought it might be helpful, especially to new people coming in. I think the worksheets that you put together are great. My only suggestion would be the fact that we look at numbers only from this year to last year. And I'm not saying overdo the numbers, but I think what would be great is if we had a summary for maybe the last following three years, just to show a trend. Because what I'm saying to myself is, all right, here's how we're comparing to last year. What's the trend like the last three years? What have we done over the last five years? Is it going up? Is it going down? And I think it's just on a one-page trend pie chart of some sort to show everyone here what this division looks like over the last five years. So just something to take into consideration, not just always looking to get better and maybe...
No, I appreciate, I think we're getting better on our presentations. That information for the last two years is in the agenda book. If you look in the book and it's online, it's as well from there. But those one-sheeters are supposed to be summaries, if you'd like to see a little more detail in those.
It's just my suggestion, other people could add, just something that, you know, coming back into this, trying to figure out what happened the last couple of years. For anybody new coming in, it's just, it's different to look at the last five years than the last year. So just a suggestion.
You're sounding more like Rick Williams, Rick. Am I looking at...
I learned a lot from Rick, see?
Anyone else? Manager? Okay. Moving on. Item two. Discussion regarding resolution to abate delinquent Luzerne County taxes for a property on Main Street in Newport Township. And this begins on page 27 in your packet. You will see the resolution and you will see some really good information considering the property. Is anyone here from Newport who'd like to discuss with us by any chance? Would you like to come forward? Tell us your name.
I mean, maybe Ramella can give a brief overview of this?
Yes, my name is Joseph Hiller. I'm the township manager in Newport Township. I guess you do have photos?
I guess you do have photos?
Yes, we do.
And the property's been vacant through about the last seven or eight years. And the owner's filed bankruptcy, and the Greater Nanter Creek area school district has forgiven the taxes, and we're in the process of acquiring the property. And we're going to have it demolished, as you can see, it's a great safety issue in our town. And we'd like your cooperation in forgiving the county portion of the taxes, so we can proceed with acquiring funds to demolish the property.
The forgiveness for County Council will be, the county portion is $5,032.
Once you demolish the structure, what are you going to do with the land?
Well, this is one of the, over the past, maybe, I guess, 10 years, we demolished a few properties in the township, and unfortunately, those properties were small properties which they didn't have any value to anybody except the neighbor. This is one of the only properties that, it's actually a nice size where we can actually get it back on the tax rolls. That's our plan, is to demolish the property, sell it, and get it back on the tax rolls, and hopefully somebody will buy it and develop it in the future.
Maybe get with a builder and have a builder build it?
Yes, it's a buildable lot, yes.
Is it in, I couldn't tell by?
It's Glen Lion, Main Street Glen Lion.
Glen Lion, okay. So, would you consider it residential?
It's residential, yes. And it's in the commercial area, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
Is the owner still alive?
Yes.
He's willing to convey it to you?
Yeah, we're ready to sign as soon as we, we have the deed, we did a title search on the property, and that's how we determined on the amount of taxes that we're owed, and we're ready to take ownership of the property.
I just have one question, did it ever come up to the Bligh, did you ever bring it to the Bligh Property Committee, or is this something?
This is something that we, yeah, yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas.
Obviously, Newport Township supervisors, they agree with the plan, correct?
Yes.
And I forgive me, I didn't get the gentleman's name who's speaking, if he's one of the supervisors or not.
He's the manager.
Oh, manager, oh, very good. Because I know, I just know Bligh's a big concern in the township, so I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So, that will be placed on the agenda, I'm assuming, in the future. Item number three, discussion regarding resolution, excuse me, authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Kingston Township for premises at 11 Carverton Road, Trucksville. Would you like to discuss that?
Yes, this is a lease for magistrate Tupper. There is, the lease, the current lease agreement expires on December 31, 2019. There's a slight increase in the rent currently, the payment is $2,412. As you can see on page 39, it would be an increase in a rental by 1.75% per year, which I believe averages maybe $57 more a month. AOPC has approved this space, magistrate Tupper has been there for a significant amount of time. Any questions?
I have a question. In the summary on page 36, is this a typo that it says with Pittston City for the property at Carverton Road? What would Pittston City have to do with it?
It wouldn't be, that's a typographical error. I apologize.
I thought Pittston City owned some land I didn't know about.
No.
So, that would be Kingston Township?
Kingston Township.
Okay.
Just one question too. You said that AOPC has approved it?
They approve all the, they have to approve all the magistrate spaces.
Has AOPC agreed to give us additional funding on an annual basis to make up?
No, they have not.
They have not, okay. That's, that's, why? Have we gone back to AOPC and say rents are going up? How about some more money? Who's responsible for doing that?
The courts would be.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at, I mean?
We have a court administrator that deals with the administrative office of the Pennsylvania courts.
Before we vote on this, could we ask him to provide us with documentation where he's gone to AOPC and asked for additional funding?
I can ask him.
Not only for this one, but for all leases in the county? I mean, I don't think the county taxpayers should be picking up the burden for a state-run office.
I can ask him to do that.
Okay, any other questions?
Did you say it's 1.75% a year?
That's what, that's the, what Kathleen Sebastian?
The first year, the first year the increase is $43 a month. The second year, the increase is a little less than $37 a month, and the last year it's $44 a month. So, it doesn't quite work out, maybe over the long run.
I think over the course of the, please.
The three years, okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to number four. Discussion regarding a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Wexford Health Sources, Inc. for inmate healthcare services, and that begins on page 46 in the packet.
Counsel, I'm going to call up our Director of Corrections, Mark Roko, who's worked exclusively on this. Our current contract with our healthcare provider ends on December 31 of this year, and this was a RFP process that Mark will tell you about. Now, in order to come up with the recommendation of the county administration, that we move with and execute a contract with Wexford Health for inmate healthcare services.
Thank you. As Mr. Pedri said, we did issue an RFP for the inmate healthcare services for Luzerne County. We received four bids on this, or four proposals, excuse me, and the best candidate, as far as we can tell, will be Wexford Health Services. Currently, Wexford Health has nine county jails in the states of Pennsylvania, Illinois, and three of them are Westmoreland, Butler, Erie County. I did speak with all the wardens of those facilities, they were all very positive responses that I received from them. Every time that Wexford has received a contract, they have maintained that contract to today. So, to me, that expresses how they're dedicated to working with the counties. As far as prices, Wexford Health was extremely competitive on their prices. When you look at them, some of the, one company did not include medications, and they put caps on the medications. So, that kind of was against what the RFP was and excluded them really from bidding on this. The one thing that we really liked was that Wexford Suicide Prevention Model was outstanding. We've added a lot of requirements to what we're expecting from our inmate health service providers. We want weekend coverage. Currently, we only have it five days a week, we want it on the weekends. We want a psychiatrist physically present, minimum number of hours per month, along with any telemed. We want a psychiatric nurse present, we want, there's a whole slew of things, psych nurse, physician's assistant onsite 40 hours a week. But what we saw from Wexford was the desire to be able to work with us, Luzerne County Correctional Facility. Most people don't understand that a jail, and the difference between a jail and a prison. We have a county jail. Inmates are there less than two years typically, and we receive about 400 bookings in and out every month. Prisons, it's a longer term, they get a better chance to spend more time with the inmates, but we need somebody that's going to be used to dealing with jails. And once again, we feel Wexford Health is the best candidate for Luzerne County.
Okay, about some questions?
Is anyone here?
Yes.
So, when was the, how long did this process take and when was it completed?
It was completed approximately a month ago.
Okay.
It was, go ahead.
Yeah, so I see that the, that's actually the amount for the first year is actually the amount that's in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, so you had that.
They were chosen, that was our candidate at the time.
Okay. And representatives of Wexford have said that they will come to council if requested. So, if anybody wants to speak to them, they'll be here.
Well, I assume we're going to have to approve this before we can approve the budget?
Yes.
Right, okay.
There's a, we need at least 30 days to transition from the one healthcare provider to another.
And when is this supposed to take effect, January 1st?
Correct.
So, I guess this will be on the next agenda?
Yes.
26.
Okay.
And on page 67, I'm assuming this is the plan, section 11.2A staffing plan, I'm assuming this is the plan that they provided, or is this the plan that you requested?
It's actually the plan that they provided, and it is what we requested also. We were able to mix it a little bit, a nurse practitioner with less hours of doctor time, a psychiatric nurse with less hours of the psychiatrist being onsite.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anyone else? I guess not, we have a lot of reading to do here.
I just, I just remembered that last year, we did, we had a lot of discussion over those two suicides, plus the other female death, and at that point, decided to look into, I mean, it was a long process. And this, and when we, when the group came in, I don't remember their name, they did not answer our questions, if I remember very clearly, they were, they were totally, just took us for granted, I think, and not very smart. So, when you've looked at these other RFPs, have you looked at them and, and feel very comfortable that they are going to be a different type of healthcare program?
I do believe that they will by looking at their written proposals and actually speaking with them. Once we start dealing with them, I would be able to answer that a little bit clearer. But pointed questions were asked during the interview process, how are they going to handle, you know, different items? And we were happy with all the responses that we received to those questions.
One more question. You, when the last group came in here, they had, they said they had difficulty hiring people to fill the positions. Is this company going to have the same degree of difficulty, or did you get a guarantee from them that they're going to be able to provide the people that they're called for in the contract?
Well, actually, the way the proposal was written, if they're unable to fill positions, there's a penalty against them. If that extends past 30 days, the penalty actually is one and a half times the hourly rate of the employees. My goal is to have the people there.
Right.
The, you know, whoever they're employing. And I will be very honest, the one thing that this company does is, if the county is interested in retaining some of the employees that work for Wexford, if they were, I mean, for, excuse me, our current provider, they would interview them and continue with their services through their provider. It's difficult to hire that many employees in an area, you know, four licensed mental health professionals, a doctor, a dentist, resident nurse, I mean, RNs that are willing to work in a jail. So, they would be, and it's part of their proposal, that if the county has an interest in retaining those individuals, that they would interview them and proceed with the hiring process, you know, making an offer to our current employee, to the provider's current employees.
So, other than the management people, you may end up with the same people, but working for a different company?
Correct.
Yeah.
And one of the nice things, the electronic medical record, the company that we currently have, I'm going to say it's proprietary, and they're going to say it isn't, but when you're doing a RFP every three years or renewing it, you're changing from one electronic record to another and transitioning it. We ask that it be something that you just continue to, you know, purchase that license agreement that any company can buy at a reasonable rate, and then it just goes on to the next one. The county will pretty much own that, instead of having to transition every time we decide that we're going to switch a medical provider. And transitioning is going to be extremely difficult for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our agenda, item number five, discussion regarding the resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act. So?
Well, Madam Chair, I have the same, I have a lot of the same concerns that Councilman Morelli mentioned earlier when we started discussing this. I received the same phone call from what I believe was the same trooper, actually on the job, and talking about his concerns with the, you know, Wyoming barracks being a longstanding, like, you know, you drive by there, you know that's the Wyoming State Police barracks. My question would be some of the same things that Councilman Morelli mentioned. Now, I would like, I don't know what power or what input this council, the next council that votes on this, although I'm not going to vote on this, I'm from this area, the greater Pittston, Wyoming area where this barracks is located, and, you know, I hope that somebody's going to ask the question, as far as to the state police, do we have any information as to, how's the coverage radius of the state policeman affected with this change? What happens with that? And is there any sort of a shifting with the amount of troopers that are covering in a certain area? That would be, that would be my question I would want to know. I mean, I know that Hanover Township and Hanover School District, they've already approved the incentive that we're talking about, but, you know, what does that do? Because if the Wyoming barracks are closed, those troopers are further away from what, you know, that part of the county is used to having. And I think that the people of the greater Pittston area and Wyoming area and that side of the river, somebody should answer that question to them, is how, how does that impact what happens? And I think, I think the state police, being such a well-respected, you know, top law enforcement in our state, you know, people want to know that if the, if the local municipalities, if they need the backup or there's, God forbid, a major incident, that they're going to be able to respond. So, I don't know if we have answers to those questions, or if that's even part of the discussion, but I think Mr. Morelli and I kind of received the same feedback, Rick, you'd agree, right, from that trooper, when he called and spoke to the both of us. So, I would want to know for the citizens of that area, what some of the answers to those questions are.
Ms. Saban?
Yes, I think my disagreement with this, or my question about this, is not so much with the state troopers. I mean, there are state troopers that you'll be able to say now, Hanover and Wicksberry issues, Hanover, Nanticoke, Wicksberry, we'll have to, you know, they'll have to go further for Wyoming, Exeter. I would hope that the state police have taken a lot of those things in to consideration, and if you're talking about distances and driving maybe, or that kind of thing, that's, that's not my concern. My concern is, how does Alerta, I mean, I don't understand Alerta for state police. Like, what is, why do we need it for the state police?
I think Linda has.
Linda probably has the answer.
Linda, yes, Ms. Haas.
Can I just say, I think we all need to be clear that this is not a vote in favor or against anything that the state police might have in mind.
Right.
This is an issue that deals with a developer who said he wants to develop some land, and his plan is to make it available to the state police. and his plan is to make it available to the state police. What the state police do, how they cover anything, is not something we're ever gonna vote on.
Uh-uh.
That, and if, if, you know, people have an internal concern within the state police, they need to talk to the people in the state police, so wait a minute. So, the issue is whether we are going to give a tax break to a developer. Now, I'll just say, we've had developers come to us in the past and ask for Koz's or whatever, and they, we granted them, and then they turned around and within a couple months, maybe even one month, they sold the property to someone else, and the Koz status stayed with it. Now, it's alerta, different thing, but the point is that we're not making an agreement with the state police for anything. If, what we're being asked to do is to agree to give a tax break to a developer. And if he chooses to continue with his plan, it's gonna involve the state police, but it doesn't involve us and the state police.
No.
We're not involved in that at all.
Yeah, I could just add, you're a hundred percent right. And I think the point of the call that I received and was middle received was the fact of bringing it to the attention because of the fact that the one thing that we can do is possibly stop alerta, bring it to the attention of the public, which is what we're doing. So, you're a hundred percent right in clarifying that, but I think that's the point. So, there's nothing, the state police is the side part of that, but it's just bringing it to attention only for the fact that a lot of people may not be aware of what could be taking place.
Right, so my question to Solicitor is then, if we do not approve alerta in any shape, and I understand the one that's being proposed to us is different than what's been proposed to the other two bodies, if we don't approve it, what happens to it? Does the whole thing fall apart, or do we just not give them the break?
We just don't give them the break.
And then it continues with whatever, in whatever manifestation it is? Okay.
It's different than a Koz. Koz, everybody.
Everybody has to agree.
This one, they don't. We don't have to approve any.
Right.
And I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Linda, we have no impact. And if the state police decide they're gonna move their barracks, they're going to move the barracks. My, my point, and I believe Councilman Morelli's point in bringing it up at this meeting for the record, is that when we receive that concern, you know, what, a vote we're gonna, well, not a vote that this council at some point is gonna make, you know, if that's gonna impact and people have concerns, if a citizen comes to me and says, hey, you know what? How does this impact what happens with state police coverage where I'm at by an action that your body is gonna take? That's the only discussion. I agree with what you said about, we don't really, we don't have any impact on.
But that's a separate, that's a separate thing. I mean, we're gonna, we're being asked to enter an agreement with the developer. Whatever the developer is doing is not really part of our discussion.
Correct.
Right, whatever the state's doing, that's part, the state police are under the governor, and he controls, he controls the hiring of the head of state police, and they're not, they're not under our jurisdiction.
I guess as long as.
But we also don't technically vote on Whitehaven either. So, just us making a point of it is bringing to the attention, Stillen, Luzerne County.
Right, yeah.
Bringing to the, to the attention of the people, that's all.
I don't think we have, we have any information. I mean, there's, there's another state police office already over in that retention. Maybe this is expansion, one that's already there.
My understanding.
Well, I just have a question, since I've been on council. The lertas, or the developers that are requesting lertas, have come before us to make their case, so to speak. They'll tell us that it's been approved by the other taxing bodies, et cetera, and, you know, they promote it for whatever reason. Is that not the, the protocol in every case then? I guess this gentleman or so who's developing it just chose not to do it?
They were scheduled to be here tonight.
Oh.
And when the decision was made that it would be the next council that would vote on it, it was decided that they would come when the new council is convened.
Okay. I have a question too. Similar to the state police. Over in the forty-foot rec complex, there's a brick building over there, does the state police use that building?
The training center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does the county own it?
No.
Okay, the county doesn't own it?
Yeah, actually, we own all, everything around it, except for that.
We don't own that property that it sits on?
We do not.
Okay, just, okay, just one clarification. All right, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, moving on, item six. Discussion regarding the resolution urging Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections to keep the State Correctional Institute at Retreat open. We have a letter in our packet for you to look at, the letter addressed to Governor Tom Wolf. And. In the packet, there is.
Page two oh one.
Okay, in page two oh one, I'm told. There is actually a resolution in the packet. Okay, yes, there is. So, I bring to your attention the resolution in the packet on page two oh one. And what we're asking, what we're, just summarizing, the closure of SCI Retreat would have a devastating impact, economic impact, on Luzerne County and the families of the individuals employed at SCI Retreat. And be it resolved, the council, Luzerne County Council, does hereby oppose the closure of Retreat and voices its strong support of Senators Baker, Gordner, and John Udichak in utilizing all options available to oppose and fight for the closure of SCI Retreat. And so, this will be voted on the next voting session. And there is also a letter that after, hopefully, the resolution will be agreed to, a letter will be sent to Governor Wolf reiterating our position concerning the closure of SCI Retreat. Any discussion about this?
Yeah, I have a point, Ms. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Ramilda, if you're there tonight for putting this together for us, for your department.
You're welcome.
And, you know, when we, a lot, two years ago, when they tried to close Retreat too, you know, Manager Petrie stood up and he was very eloquent and spoke against the closing of it. And I was able to get down last month to the, they had a public forum down in Nanticoke High School, and it was very well attended. And I must say, Senator, Senator Baker, they did a bang-up job about putting the case together why that should be remained open. And, you know, there's so many good reasons for it, I won't elaborate on it here, but there is gonna be another public meeting Thursday, November twenty-first at five-thirty. It's gonna be held this time at the municipal building down there in Nanticoke. And the State Correctional Officer Association has, you know, would love to have our support. They're obviously asking everybody, it's gonna cost a lot of jobs if that place closes. And it's, especially down there, we have Manager Newport Township there and that, I'm sure he feels exactly the same way. It'd be very tough for the townships there in the Nanticoke area. And, you know, if we could, Sharon, I did send an email, and you're absolutely right, I know we're not gonna vote on it till next week, but if we could have a second copy and perhaps take that down and hand that personally to the folks down there on the twenty-first, I think that would also send a very strong unified message just going forward. Thank you.
Harry, we're not, we're not voting on it.
Correct.
At that point.
I understand that, but for next week's meeting.
Next week's a work session.
Next week is, is not a, an official voting meeting, Harry. But we can, yes, if, we can have a special meeting.
I think, I would definitely move to expedite that if we could.
Schedule a special meeting, sure.
Yeah, absolutely, just maybe prior to the budget movement. Get my oversight, I never realized we have a voting meeting next week.
Ms. Saban?
Tell us the date again of that, and date and place and where?
It's Thursday.
Yep, yep, it's Thursday, November twenty-first, five-thirty PM at the Nanticoke Municipal Building.
Correct, I will be attending as well.
Do we need a?
That's great, ma'am.
We can let Mr. McKinley handle scheduling a special meeting, okay, thank you. Okay, Harry, great idea, thank you very much.
No, thank you, Jane, thanks, everybody.
Thanks for the information. Okay, before we move to the budget work session, I'd like to take a break for, let's see, what time is it? Hold on a minute, it's seven o'clock. Let's reconvene at seven-ten. Well, we have public comment, according to the agenda, after the proposed budget session, the proposed budget hearings, Mr. Urban.
Okay.
Okay, all right, see everyone in ten minutes. No, I've got many cough drops, thank you.
Mr. Petrie?
They can, they can accept or reject my advice. But as a matter of law. It's linked to the council, to the future council, or something that's not an eccentric government function.
Right, and there's no, and the, you're definitely.
Oh.
Correct, correct, correct.
Oh, I never, I didn't realize you didn't talk about it.
Mrs. Cassidy, it works on one line?
You wanna get underneath here? Are you sure? Oh, yeah, I'm texting her. My homies, my my homie.
Thank you.
Oh.
He missed, uh, he missed this big one on Monday.
Yeah.
That's religion thing.
Chair, what's that, what's the retirement meeting? That was switched, the retirement board. Retirement committee meeting. Remember, that was switched. I didn't see it. I forgot, too, my computer.
All right, folks. I see it's eleven minutes after, so let's get started again. Please take your seats. And we are going to begin the, um, review of the Division Forty, which is short. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you very much, um, for the opportunity to present our budget for the 2020 year. With me tonight is Karen Krizik, who is our financial analyst at the facility. And once again, I want to thank you for allowing us to present our proposed budget. Okay. I'm just gonna start with, uh, the obvious highlights. The proposed budget for 2020 for the correct, the Division Corrections is twenty-eight million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and three dollars. That encompasses three divisions. You have the administrative, the minimal offenders unit, and the main facility. Following the budget worksheet report and the proposed, uh, budget worksheet, salaries for 2019 remain the same. Uh, excuse me. The, uh, revenue remains the same for 2020. The overtime for wages is increasing by thirty percent, increased to three thousand dollars. That is for three training officers at the facility. Increased training, different training schedules that we've created to better suit the workforce. The benefit sick leave buyback is another increase of a hundred and five percent. Once, uh, a union employee has a hundred and twenty-five days on their sick bank, they're able to sell anything in excess over the one twenty-five back to the county each year. The insurance liability, um, honestly, it's a premium increase. Those numbers are given to us. Uh, as we discussed earlier, prisoner health care is increasing by thirteen percent from two point five million to two million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-three. And then the other item is listed as two institutions. That is the day reporting center for the county and the drug and alcohol sessions inside the prison. It's a contractual increase in that amount. Are there any questions about the administrative?
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, the other contractual services, five fifty dot fifteen. What are those?
Pre-trial services.
Under administration, corrections administration?
Yes. It would be, um, I'd like to say it was Catholic social services. Pre-trial services, bail. At this point in time, uh, we were notified approximately...
A week?
Yeah, a week, week and a half ago, that they're no longer to provide that service, and we need to find somebody new to do it.
Okay, so in 2018, that was two ninety-three thousand, then it was two ninety-nine thousand, now it's three oh-two. So it's gone up nine thousand dollars in two years?
Yes, three percent, uh, increase on... It was two hundred and ninety-nine, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand in 2019. It's gone up three thousand dollars from last year to this year. And it was six thousand dollars the year before that.
Right.
Correct.
So who's providing those services now?
Right now, Catholic social services are until December thirty-first.
We're actually in discussions with the courts. Uh, many of the, uh, the counties across the Commonwealth, uh, the probation department handles these services. And we're in discussions with the courts to have that together. Uh, we believe that that may be a change in the, the court's budget, uh, going forward, but we're still working on the details. Catholic social services kind of surprised us with that letter we received last week.
So is that the only item in that line? Is that the only line?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if probation takes that over, does that mean your budget will go down by three hundred thousand dollars?
I don't believe that it will. Uh, if they would take over all the drug testing, everything, we might have to pay that to, um, probation services.
We're gonna have to work that out.
Yeah, I, I mean, we don't know.
Because if it's all, if it's all general fund, we have to figure it out, e- exactly what the situation would be. Uh, I believe that they, that the, the probation is looking to do a grant, um, from the state as, as to a certain number as well. Uh, we're, so that, that line item will still be in flux, Ms. Halk, until, uh, we, we, we get the next steps, uh, in gear with the courts.
Before December fifteenth?
Before next week, because I think the courts are presenting next Monday, I believe.
Good, okay. That's the only thing I have on that, uh, on the administration.
Then it looks like your positions stayed the same nineteen and twenty, is that correct?
Correct.
I got, I have a question, Ms. Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Going back to, um, with Ms. Halk, it's, uh, Catholic contractual services, five, five fifty point fifteen. So how, how do we stand for the 2019 actuals on that? I mean, as of posting, it was two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Has that changed though, Mr. Rakovich? Um, since September?
At this moment, we are at two hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, with two months left to go in the year.
Are we on target for hitting that two hundred and ninety-nine then, do you think?
Correct.
What, what kind of services do you actually get for pre-trial?
Pre-trial services?
And, 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 again, that's, that is only Catholic social services. Are, are they the only game in town to provide those services, or are there other competitors?
That's what we're exploring.
Yeah, and whether that be probation, or whether that be something that are, um, o- obviously, we currently have a contract with Geo, uh, as well.
Yeah.
Uh, from, uh, they could be, uh, potential vendor in that as, as, as well, to, to be where we're at.
Okay.
But there, but Catholic social services has had a couple major contracts with the county for, since seventies. Uh, that has now been, they've, they've been formed, they're, they're not moving forward with any of those. Um, and so that has, uh, just thrown us off a little bit regarding our, our timeline here.
I guess my, my question, my, my question was, what, what exactly pre-trial services are inmates getting that the taxpayers are paying for?
I'll let Mark take that one.
And why, and why are they getting them? I mean, and why, and why isn't the inmate paying for them?
It's actually a, basically a bail service. It's a supervised bail. For an inmate that can't afford to post the bail. Now, we aren't talking the half-million dollar bills, we're talking the five-thousand-dollar bails, the ten-thousand-dollar bails. Cat, the pre-trial services takes them, uh, interviews them, determines whether they would be willing to supervise them. And then they're, they actually become the bail agent for the county. The inmate, the individual is then responsible for reporting to them at least once a week, drug testing, making sure that they're following up with all the treatment, things that they need to do. If we, we currently have between a hundred and a hundred and fifty inmates at our day reporting center. There's a hundred and fifty inmates that are involved in the pre-trial services. Our inmate population would grow by a hundred and fifty if we were to, uh, shut down that program.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that program over there, but this is the Catholic social services program. These are not people that are sitting over there on the boulevard, going over there every day. These are a different group of people, right?
This is a different group of people.
Right, right.
Um, the level of supervision is not as high as the day reporting center. These people are not convicted. They haven't been tried yet.
Right.
So they have to have clean urine, uh, screens, they have to go in for different training that's recommended, drug and alcohol, mental health, and, and report once a week.
Even though they've not been convicted?
Correct.
As a condition of bail?
As a condition of their bail. Correct.
That's, that's, that, that one's, that one's hard to take, I... And who gives them the, who, who gives them these conditions? Who, who puts these conditions on them?
The judges put the conditions on them.
So when, when the person is arrested, the judge says, "I'll give you bail, but you need to go and do a drug test."
No, the judge would say, "Under Catholic social services." They would modify the bail either to unsecured, um, with the, with the condition that they're under pre-trial services.
Okay. So the, uh, age-old adage that, uh, you're not guilty until you're proven guilty, and court of law doesn't pertain to these people, because they're basically being told to do things.
As a condition of their bail.
As a condition of bail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you go on?
Yes.
More questions, too, Ms. Chair?
Yes.
And I'm forgetting, I don't know if I heard correctly, but I'm looking at that line item, five fifty eighty-three, outside inmate housing.
Yes.
At the very bottom, it was, um, twenty-one eighteen budget for two hundred thousand dollars. We, we've spent this year to date thirty-five thousand. And I see that's been decreasing over the past couple of years, so hats off to you, Mr. Rakovich, and your staff. How, how are we looking at that going forward?
Mr. Halk, I'm, I'm still pretty steadfast in saying I believe that we need to maintain that two hundred thousand dollars. I did a little quick math on this. If we had eight minutes, eight inmates a day at an average rate of seventy dollars a day for three hundred and sixty-five, uh, days a year, that would be two hundred and four thousand dollars. So that would be housing out eight inmates to another facility for the year.
Uh-huh.
That, you know, we've only spent thirty-five thus far, and some of the bills we haven't received yet.
Okay. Any idea about the, where we're gonna land December thirty-first?
Honestly, we're working very hard to keep it as low as possible. You know, fifty, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate that.
Might, might be a good candidate for the reserve fund, to move, move this money into the reserve fund.
The only problem with the reserve fund, Mr. Urban, is if we have to move inmates out, it's gonna be quite a few weeks until we're able to pay those bills, and council can still say no. And then I've already moved the inmates out, and I don't have a way to pay for it, but...
I don't think they would.
I think, um, I think Mr. Mr. Rakovich during his now, three years? Four years? Four, four years as the...
Four budget presentations.
Four budget presentations as the director of corrections has, has proven himself to be a pretty, uh, a, a, a pretty great steward of, of, of county funds when it comes, especially comes to outside inmate housing. Uh, these are, these are monies that we've continually sought to, um, to, to, to lower over the years. I remember one year was over five hundred thousand dollars at one point. But Mr. Rakovich has been working on this very, very closely, and you could see, he doesn't spend it, um, unless we absolutely have to. Um, however, I do, uh, believe in the safety at, at all costs, and, um, I, I do rely upon Mr. Rakovich's judgment, uh, regarding that. If council would move it to the reserve item, uh, the problem would be, it takes about a six-week period in order for that to, to, to move that, that, that money out at some point. Now, I, I'm hopeful county council will, would support that, that move if that's, if that's council's decision. But in this particular case, Mr. Rakovich doesn't use this money unless it's absolutely needed, and I believe he needs that flexibility.
Yeah, you got, you got a billing period, though.
Yeah, we appreciate him too, and I, I'm, I think the only person who enjoys budget season more than Mr. Rakovich is Mr. Parsnick. So, you know, having, again, appreciate you there, Mr. Rakovich.
Thank you.
But you, you also have a billing cycle. I mean, once, once they go out, it takes, it takes about thirty days before they send you a bill, so you've got a thirty-day, thirty-day window there. And if you see that you're getting behind it, or you see that you're gonna use more, you can say, "Okay, I, I think I'm gonna need another twenty thousand for the next month or two." You have the money pulled out and moved into the fund before you get it low enough.
And, Mr. Rakovich, I would think something like this, is it pretty difficult to predict? I'm looking at the, uh, twenty-eighteen actual, which was a little over sixty-six thousand dollars. That, that'd be lovely to see that this year, don't you think?
That, that's true. I, but, I mean, I've been there where we're receiving, you know, over a weekend, sixty new inmates at one time, with no releases at that point. Um, you know, and we're, we're shuffling inmate housing areas to be able to accommodate the, the number of inmates that we actually have. I, I, I can't sit here and, you know, say that I will or won't. It could change in the blink of an eye as, as to us needing to house inmates at another facility.
Well, thank you for your honesty, I appreciate that. Anyone else before Mr. Rakovich moves on to the next? Okay, Mr. Rakovich.
All right. Our next department is forty-two thirty-four, minimal offenders unit. The proposed revenue for 2020 is three hundred and sixty thousand two hundred dollars. The proposed expenditures are four million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Our number of, uh, employees has remained steady at the minimal offenders unit. Okay. Wages represented are increasing, um, by three percent in 2020. That is a contractual obligation. Wages overtime are also increasing, uh, by ten thousand dollars. There's different steps that the inmates take, it's contractual obligation also. The longevity is also a contractual obligation. Years of service, after five years, after ten years, fifteen, twenty. So as employees have longer time there, they receive the higher longevity. And these are actually all calculated figures.
I, I have a question for you. Five forty sixty-one, the inmate supplies, can you tell us again? I know you've probably explained this before.
I have.
What are, what, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's fine, um...
I mean, I know what inmate clothing is, and linens and so on, and clothing, but how about inmate supplies? Can you give us some examples?
I will give you some examples. The mattresses that the inmates sleep on. Fairly expensive, fire retardant, hard cover. However, inmates like to tear them, hide things inside of them. So sometimes they're destroyed. We go through a large number of inmate mattresses. Trash bags, um, gloves, a, we call them suicide smock. It's a, um, outfit that's tear-resistant material. Same thing with the blankets. It's a thick, heavy material. Razor blades for the inmates. Smocks, excuse me, um, mops, feminine hygiene products. Property bags. When inmates come into the facility, they're actually, they have their watches, their rings, their diamonds, earrings. They actually have to go into a certain bag, a sealable bag, that's signed off on. Cleaning products. We have to ensure the cleanliness of our facility. The inmates provide the labor, but we have to make sure that everything, showers are disinfected. You have six hundred and fifty-plus people taking a shower at least once a day. I won't say in the same shower, but we have to ensure the cleanliness of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many showers do you have?
Okay, um, I wasn't expecting that one. At our minimal offenders, we have six heads on each shower block, so eighteen showers, shower heads. Three hard shower areas at our minimal offenders unit. Fifth floor has two showers. Fourth floor has four showers. Third floor has seven showers. Second floor has
I need a good...
Six showers. First floor has four showers. I didn't do, I didn't do the adding, and I'm not quite sure. Where am I at, Karen?
You're on the sewers.
Okay.
Sewer side.
The sewer. And be happy to see, that's a thirty-three percent decrease for minimal offenders unit. Sanitation, as I believe was mentioned. Sanitation is gonna be coming out of individual line items, and it'll be in, uh, general fund. Water is also a thirty-one percent decrease, which, uh, we attribute to, um, the projects that were done, uh... Water is also a 31% decrease, which we attribute to the projects that were done, reduction, et cetera. And everything that is flushed, any water that's used, obviously the sewer would also decrease by a similar amount.
Can I ask you, I was gonna ask you about those line items anyway. I'm looking in the budget book, I'm not looking on your cheat sheet. But in the budget book, so item 550.41, which is sewer, the water line and the gas line. If you look back at the 2018 actual amounts, they're pretty low too. And, I mean, I know you said that some of this is due to the energy savings projects, but it seems like they were over-budgeted in 2018 as well.
Well, I'm gonna give you the honest, completely honest on that. Accounts payable, when they're receiving the bills, they're receiving a gas bill or a water bill for the Division of Corrections. And it wasn't actually broken into Minimal Offenders Unit, main facility, Training Department.
Right.
So whatever budget line item had the most kind of was taken out of there. This year, we've actually done a lot of work on the electricity and utilities as far as getting the meter numbers for each building and making sure that they're gonna be billed to the appropriate line item.
Okay.
And the same thing with the gas meter heads and the, so the money is...
It's there, but it's split up in three places.
Correct.
Right, okay. And then I guess I just, because we've been talking about this with the Administrative Code, the work release day reporting center falls under, actually under Minimal Offenders Unit, right? So all of your expenses, Central Admin, minimal work release?
No, work release...
It's under Minimal Offenders, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about G. I'm sorry.
Yep, so because in the Administrative Code, we had broken down into three sections what the correctional facilities were, but work release expenses, everything is falling under Minimal Offenders. Okay?
Correct.
Okay. All right, just organizationally, we're trying to get it correct, okay?
Yeah. On your revenue side, your processing fee, how much is that? 50 bucks?
No, processing fee is $100.
What can you do to raise that?
What can we do? We did raise that.
Well, maybe you need to raise it again. I mean, you know, you're asking the taxpayers to pay more of these, but they're not the ones going in jail. I mean, the people coming in jail need to be paying their way. When you look at room and board, you're collecting 1,500 bucks out. How much is really owed to you?
Well, that's the room and board.
Right.
That is difficult. Processing fee, we are collecting through the...
Talking when they come in.
When they come in.
Right.
And also every deposit that they receive, we take a percentage of that.
Right, how come you can't do that with room and board?
Because they aren't sentenced. Once they become sentenced, their money stops.
Okay. They're not sentenced.
They're not sentenced, therefore you cannot take room and board for, from them.
These are non-sentenced people for room and board or sentenced people?
They would be sentenced.
So the room and board is a sentenced people?
Correct. Right, and then when we're shipping them off to SEI or the Receiving Court for Time Serve, they're walking out the door.
Right. How much do you have billed though in the room and board area that's been never collected?
Well, we do have a collection.
Yeah, I know you do, but how much is outstanding that's never been collected?
300,000 at least.
Each year, maybe, or that total?
No, I'm gonna say each year.
Each year that's not collected?
And that's a guess. I mean, I'm guessing at that.
Maybe you put your head together with your prison boards that you have and come up with a better solution of collecting that money. Rather than just, you know, the easy way is to tell the taxpayer, I need more money, but yet you've got $300,000 of room and board that's not collected on your basis for inmates who actually ate at the taxpayer's expense and spent time in there and used mattresses and cut mattresses up and...
What do you do if they can't pay?
Well, at some point in time, I think people can pay. At some point in time, they can pay. And that's just it.
Some of them are there because they can't pay their alimony or their child...
Yeah, I know, but at some point in time in the future, they can pay. I was always, I guess, opposed to putting people in that they couldn't pay because then they weren't able to work. And then when they're not able to work, they're not able to pay. It's a cycle.
Okay, any more questions for this section? Mr. Rakovich, you wanna go on?
Absolutely. Our next section is going to be LCCF, our main facility. 4235. The 2020 proposed revenue is $413,050. The proposed expenditures are $413,500. The first item on revenue is a PCC state grant. That is a two-year grant for, it's actually for us, we requested it for Vivitrol. The only thing that I wanna make clear is that's gonna be based on how much we actually spend. So it's not a straight-out $145,000 revenue that we're receiving and we can do as we want. As we spend that money, we will submit it through PCCD and be reimbursed for what was spent.
But you're budgeting 145 because you're assuming you're...
We're assuming that we will, yep. Okay. Wages nonrepresented, line item 510.15. That is a 1% increase to $890,000. That's wages nonrepresented. So 15 employees in that area. Wages represented, number two. We have a 4% increase to $13,555,500, which is contractual. Wages holiday pay is another increase that we have. It's 1%. We never know by the contract who will be working the holiday. Senior officers are obviously paid more per day shift week than the newer officers. Sometimes it's the senior officers get the holidays and actually work them and receive a higher pay. So we're doing, you know, the best that we can to try to determine based on past usage what days people will get. Benefits, healthcare opt-out. That is a 34% increase. We have 12 union employees that will be taking the opt-out of health benefits from the county. An actual calculated number on that. Repairs, maintenance, machinery and equipment. That is an 11% reduction for $225,000 to $200,000 reduction. I don't think there's any questions about that. Repairs, maintenance, miscellaneous, that's a 25% reduction from 20,000 to 5,000. Electricity, also another reduction, 9%. Gas, 13% reduction. Sewer, 17% reduction. Sanitation, I had mentioned. And then water is a 22% decrease also.
Got a question?
Please.
Central Court, are you seeing a decrease in inmates because of it?
I believe that they're definitely processed quicker. I mean, from my current position to say whether I think that it's only from Central Court...
Yeah, it's hard to say.
It is hard to say. My shoot-from-the-hip answer would be yes. We are seeing reduction.
Yeah, 'cause I see the decreases in all the utilities that you mentioned, but kitchen supplies, inmate clothing, inmate supplies are relatively increasing or staying the same. I just didn't know if that was impacting those line items.
It does. Every inmate increases, you know, they're all taking showers, they're all using electricity, they're all using razors to shave. So as the population increases, the number of meals that we have to put out, the number of clothing, everything is directly tied except for the salaries.
Yeah.
We pretty much remain the same as far as the number of staffing per shift. It can change slightly based on if we have a large increase in population, but everything else fluctuates along with the population.
Have you seen a reduction because of the mental health court, drug, you know, many of the mini courts?
The one thing that I really think the county's doing a wonderful job is trying to keep, you know, the inmates out of jail that don't really need to be there. Mental health diversionary programs.
Oh, the diversionary.
My answer would be yes, I have seen. But the more substantive answer is we aren't dealing with the same number of problem inmates that we were. Last year, if you would've asked me, we're spending 30% of our time on six inmates that are just mentally, they have mental problems. I'm seeing that number less. I hope that that's what it's attributed to. And I think that it is.
Maybe wexer would help you there.
Right, exactly.
Anyone else?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, line item 550.43, the water bill. I see your ask is down 40,000, Mr. Rakovich. Is that a direct result of the new showers that were put in last year? Decrease in water usage?
I think the year before, it was actually a little high that we had budgeted. But yes, it is to the water savings and the energy efficiency programs that we put in place.
Okay, very good. And that's what I was wondering. 'Cause even if we look at 2018, you know, we hit 133,000, 134,000 at that year. And that was before those things went effect. Do you think we could shrink down that 145 a little bit?
No.
For the next year?
I mean...
He just choked.
You know what? Yeah, we're actually trying to realign the bills, like I had said. We've gone to every meter to make sure that we know how much water is coming, you know, being billed for the prison, the main facility. How much is being billed for the work release? Next year, 2021, hopefully when I'm presenting it, I can even pare it down further. But I think it's, it wouldn't be wise of me to try to do that at this point in time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On electric, you spent 85 so far. Last year, you budgeted for 165. Next year, you're budgeting for 150.
Correct. And we were also as high, over 200,000. We don't have them, we're only going back two years here. There were points where 200,000. Once again, I attribute that to the energy efficiency. We've gone to LED.
Right.
The air conditioning, it's a new efficient model there. You know, some different gas heaters were put in at the Minimal Offenders Unit. Try to, you know, balance that out next year so we can give you, you know, 100% guesstimate that's really accurate next year on where we're gonna be. Can I say guesstimate? Because if our inmate population goes way, way up, we're gonna have an increase in those numbers.
How many inmates do you think are watching TV all day long?
Well, I'm sure they go out for their recreation.
They get an hour, two hours?
Two hours of recreation, as long as they're in general population.
Right.
I would say probably 40%.
Are watching TV all day?
Mm-hmm.
Any electrical use charged to their inmate accounts?
Indirectly, no.
Can you?
I'd like to know how we proportion that to each inmate.
You just said 40%.
Well, 40% of the inmates, but the 60% that don't, how do I charge them?
Yeah, well, not the account, the overall, the profit account.
Well, then the answer would be yes, because what they're watching TV, they're charged for the TV.
Right.
And in that charge price pays for the cable. Like the taxpayer isn't paying for the cable. The electricity, yeah. Looking away is to try to make money. Save the taxpayer money.
Allocate the costwork.
I got you.
Mr. Rakovich, I have a question in general about all three areas in terms of wage increases for nonrepresented. So in Corrections Administration, you have a line item of 510.16 for merit increase. And do you know what percentage that is? That's in the first, in the Corrections Administration.
Corrections Administration. Give me one second to get back to my page.
It's a $1,600 increase.
What line item was that?
It's 510.16. And it's found under, only under the first department, the 4233 Corrections Administration?
Okay, the merit increases were all moved to one line item rather than for each division.
Okay, so they're all found for the entire division?
For all the administration, that's, yes.
Okay, but in the other, in the other sections then, in, under Minimal Offenders, there are the nonrepresented salaries are higher. Now, your positions didn't change, right? So in Nonrepresented, in Minimal Offenders, 4234, your nonrepresented wages show a $3,000 increase there. And then in...
A requested $3,000 increase.
Nonrepresented?
For nonrepresented.
Correct, well, Ms. Halk, that salary would include the merit increase from this year.
From this year?
Correct.
Okay. So this is carried forward then from the merit increases that were awarded after...
Correct.
After the budget was passed.
Correct, so council allocated money for the merit increase. We've moved forward then February of 2019. So you'll see the number in the wages nonrepresented, which is the actual number.
Okay, so there's like a $16,000 increase over last year's approved amounts. In the nonrepresented, there's about a $16,000 total increase. And then there's another 26 that's being budgeted for from this year. Is that correct then? It's roughly about $16,000 more than was approved in the line item for salaries last year.
Well, there's $24,000 allocated by county council.
Right, right, so I get it. I understand that I'm talking about the actual salary.
Oh, the actual salary, I got you.
The actual salary line is $16,000 more than it was last year. And then you're allocating another $26,000 this year for potential merit increases?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is 2% of all nonrepresented salaries.
2% of all nonrepresented, okay. 'Cause in, and this is what raised the question for me, because you had, have a number of 1% for 15 employees in this, in your worksheet here. So it said a 1% change. And I was wondering about that because I know the manager said that he proposed a 2% increase for all of the nonrepresented.
But the actual percentage was a 1%. Between 19s and 20s. Because in 19, all of that was budgeted or available, wasn't given out.
Right, so what happens to that money?
That goes back in... That goes back into
Right.
the general fund.
Right, that's my point. So they went up $16,000 over, at the beginning of this year or sometime during 2019?
Over all of the divisions, yes.
Right, right. I got that. And then there's another $26,000 that's being allocated toward raises for next year.
Correct.
And that is 2%?
Yes.
So that's, I mean, this 1% is what made me question it. The one, that there's a 1% number there only in that one division or in that, in that one department.
Okay.
But the 26,000 that's allocated is a 2% on all of those nonrepresented salaries?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rakovich. Mark, you're complete. I have a question for you.
Okay.
Under, let's see, where is it? Kitchen and Groceries, item 540.52. I'm going to ask the question. I see there's an increase requested from 673-909, the actual amount to, well, actually, you do have this year's, you expect to reach $705,000, and you're asking for the same amount next year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Now, could you just give me an example of a typical, I don't know, dinner, you know, the evening meal for the inmates? Because I don't really know, I don't expect you to give me the menu for five days a week, but just as an example.
Typical dinner would be a vegetable, protein, chili, a starch, rice, a drink that they're, that they would have, and some sort of dessert.
And that's pretty much typical?
That's typical meal.
Assume lunch might be a little lighter?
Lunch would be hamburger.
Okay.
I mean, there are a few items we try to avoid. Liver, no pork is served, but the way it's actually done, the items that are on bid, when they, you know, are a good price on them, that's when we purchase them.
Sure.
And we'll balance out. I could bring in a menu, but...
Not necessary. I was just curious, because I'm assuming your people who are in charge of food service do what every other family in Luzerne County does, which is basically saying, I've got this much money. Now, how can I stretch it when I go to the grocery store? Because groceries have gone through the roof, I mean.
They have. The one thing I will say, I'm actually kind of proud of the food that we put out for the inmates, and the public looks at me but, and says, well, why would you say something like that? Bread and water for them. But, you know, they're there 24/7, 365 days a year. There's a few items that you don't want to play around with, with the inmates, and food is one of them. Not that, not that anything is fancy, but I believe it's a good meal that they receive.
Good, thank you very much.
At a fair price.
Thank you. Anybody else for Mr. Rakovich?
Mark, question. Do you have any idea about how many inmates have mental health problems? Just a general idea. Is there a lot? Is there most?
20% at least.
All of them are evaluated when they come in?
Correct.
And the ones that have mental health issues, can they weed them out and find out who they are? I mean, there's probably some that you automatically don't know.
Some of them, the moment they walk through the door, we know that they have, or at least pretend that they're having them.
So they're going to be seen, they're going to be evaluated, they're going to be possibly diagnosed and say, you need to take this medication?
And that is part of the criteria for the inmate health services, that they would all be evaluated, but we cannot force the medication on them. We can recommend the medication. Psychiatrists can say, you know, you could benefit from this, but we're not allowed to force the medication on them without a court order.
If they don't take the medication, they'll be back, or exactly what they're doing again, because this will never get better from that. So the psychiatrist obviously has to evaluate them and actually give them, this is the medication you need, or the nurse do that?
Well, psychiatric nurse in conjunction with the psychiatrist and telemed would be the ones handling that portion of it. Since they closed all the state hospitals, or many of the state hospitals, correctional facilities statewide are the ones with the majority of individuals with mental health issues in them.
So they will stay with you. There's no way you can say, hey, you belong in, does Burke have a site? No, no one has. I mean...
Norristown and Torrance.
So you deal with all of that, and obviously if they get out and they don't take the medications, they're going to come right back in again. So it's just one big circle.
I have inmates that have been there 47 times, 47 different bookings.
Yeah, they won't stop. Yeah, okay, thanks.
They don't stay for the meal, sir.
One more question about the revenue item for the state grant, the PCCD grant, and you said that was for VIVITROL?
Yes.
Is that on a voluntary basis with your inmates, though?
Yes.
Okay, so this 145,000, is that a cap on it if you have more inmates that are willing to take those shots?
That would be the cap on it.
That would be the cap?
Correct.
So that's the most you would get out of the grant?
Correct.
Okay.
One more, Miss.
Is there any else?
The DOJ grant?
Yes, I actually have that. Just off the top of my head, the one thing you have to realize with the DOJ grant is that we run on a calendar year. DOJ runs on the fiscal year. Last year, the amount that we received, and I passed by it, I don't know why, was 155, 150, I'm still looking for it. I did write it in. Oh, I don't know. Yep, 155,217 is what we received, but that will probably be budgeted back to 2018's budget.
And what do you predict this year?
60, 60,000. It's too difficult. I mean, you're actually talking number of inmate days for inmates that are foreign-born slash illegal, and they have to be convicted of two misdemeanors and/or a felony to be eligible for it, and they have to have a minimum of three days where they were incarcerated in a row at our facility. So I started, many years ago, we were receiving $3,000 a year.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Rakovich, you've been at Prince. Thank you so much for answering all of our questions.
I'm excused, thank you.
Thank you, next, your job.
Okay, next up.
Madam Chair, moving to the Operations Division next, for the next division. Batting leadoff will be Heath Eddy from our Planning and Zoning Department.
Welcome.
Good evening, my chair, members of council. The operational service staff is happy to be here to review and answer any questions that you have regarding our proposed budget for the 2020 calendar year.
Thank you.
Our Executive Director, Heath Eddy, will be beginning with our Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay, thank you. This year's proposed budget reflects an increase primarily having to do with the update to the Long Range Transportation Plan and the Bya County Regional Plan. The Long Range Transportation Plan is required to be updated every five years under the MPO requirements for the Lackawanna-Luzerne Transportation Study. The plan is designed, we are intending to get started on that update process as soon as next month with a consultant that we anticipate selecting in the next week or so, and that will take place during the entirety of the next calendar year. We have to have that adopted and in place by February 2021. In concert with that, we will be updating our Bya County Regional Plan, which was originally adopted in 2011 with an earlier rendition of the transportation plan. For our budget purposes, we plugged in a number based on an educated guess, which fortunately, as it turns out, was high, so we'll be making a recommendation in that regard forthcoming. Our budget proposal reflects increases in revenues to account for at least a bulk of those costs. We anticipate trying to secure a DCED grant of up to $125,000 toward the update of those plans. In addition, we anticipate also plugging in numbers from reimbursements from Lackawanna County. This plan process will, at least the comprehensive regional plan part of the process, will be running through our budget, and Lackawanna County will reimburse us for the costs related to that. We also, our budget also reflects an increase in the costs and revenues and expenses for subdivision and land development, and those essentially reflect what we've been doing the last couple of years, particularly on the expense side. This year, we are already at $127,000 in expenses, which is well above what we had originally budgeted for the year, so we are anticipating a request, we're requesting an increase in that expense line. The good news is, is that the expense line is also mirrored by the increase in revenues in the 405.30 line item, which we're already well past the number of already budgeted. Right now, we are at about 235,000 for the year, which is already 68,000 above what we forecast for the year. So we anticipate not having any trouble maintaining that expense to revenue line. At this point, I don't know that I necessarily have to go through anything specific, other than I will be making a recommendation. As I mentioned, the line item for 550.15, other contractual services, our initial request is $436,000, and that is largely for the Long Range Transportation Plan, Bya County Regional Plan update. Based on the RFPs that we have received, I can recommend to you a reduction of that line from 436 down to 335,000. So we're reducing it by 101,000. We hope to have that project almost all done next year. It would be a really, best-case scenario to have it done entirely within the fiscal year. I would anticipate, however, that it would roll over a little bit into 2021, but the bulk of the costs and the work for that project will be done next year.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
In regard to revenue, 405.30.
Yes.
The subdivision land development fees, you're projecting a 25% increase. Is that correct? Am I reading that?
Yes.
So it's good news for Luzerne County?
Yes. Actually, the 210,000 that we're requesting is actually slightly below the last trend line for the last four years. We came in higher because at 167, this year, we hit that mark in July. So we are well ahead of our revenue on that line.
Is that based upon the amount of work you have come in?
Yes. It's entirely based on what the plans come in.
Right.
Now, the good news is that if those revenues also go down, it's because our activity's gone down, which means the expense item under 550.18 also goes down.
Right. How many, how many plans you have that aren't complete?
Um, hang on. Right now, between the plans that we review for municipalities on an advisory basis versus the ones we actually handle, we've done about 175.
How many still have pending?
Probably about, there's probably about six of them outstanding at the moment.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Soon as Ms. Howe is finished, Harry.
550.18, the engineering architectural expense?
Yeah.
Of 130,000. What does that involve? What's in, what's in that expense line?
That line item is for third-party engineers. We have three of them under contract, under a memorandum of understanding that runs through, will run, run through next year, next fiscal year.
But don't we have county engineers that can sign off on documents that are needed?
Yeah, they don't so much sign off on documentation. They do the reviews, but for the larger projects that require a significant stormwater review component, we have to farm those out to third-party engineers to do those reviews. Those are for larger projects or projects that have more complexity to them?
Some divisions with greater than 10 parcels are part of that thing. If there are 10 parcels or less, they're done in-house through our engineering staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are for the ones that are larger, that are involved with greater level of detail and for the land development plans.
Then why can't they be done in-house?
Quite honestly, we don't have the staffing to do it.
Okay.
And I don't, we've looked at this before. I don't think that this is something, because of the inconsistency in the volume that we've had over the years since I've been here and a few years prior, I don't think we could really bank on a specified amount to justify it. Even in our busiest year of the last three years, we did a study last year, and we would barely have paid the salary for an additional engineer to cover those.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Oh, Harry, you're next.
Hey, welcome back, Mr. Eddy.
Hi.
Just a question, a clarification question. I think you spoke to it, but line item 550.15, other contractual services?
Yes.
But I hear you're correctly in saying you expect that to go down by 100,000. Was that that line item?
Yes, that's the one I'm recommending it drop from 436 to 335.
Okay.
101,000, Harry.
The reason behind that, what's the decrease for?
101, Harry.
The reasoning is that...
I'm sorry.
Okay. The reasoning for that is that we, when I was constructing the budget for our, this proposed budget, we were operating on a, an assumed guess as to how much we thought the, the plan updates were going to cost, and what they ended up coming with, back with from our, from the consultants that submitted proposals came in well under that number, so we were able to justify a reduction.
We didn't have actual figures the time of the budget preparation, and actual figures came in lower.
So I'm seeing, is this, is this my turn, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So I'm just looking at the overall. The bottom line is revenue, it's nice it went up. Looks like you're almost 100, $200,000 over the past year, but also costs went up, $300,000. So it's, it almost looks like it's revenue neutral, though, even though we've seen increase across the board. And that's, that will go back down the next year, correct, after the long-range plan is completed?
That's, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, quickly. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Next, I could bring up Bill McIntosh, our county engineer and department head for our Building and Grounds Department.
Counsel, this is the area of, that I asked for counsel review three new positions in the 2020 budget. Two of them were for the IT department for security, based upon the cyber attack that we just reviewed. The final one is for an additional custodian that I'm, that we're seeking to add, that would be in charge of the records retention building, as well as handle as a floater for other days off as well. And that would be a represented AFME position. Turnover, Mr. McIntosh.
Good evening.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. McIntosh is about to present. Can you hold off a bit, Harry? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. So overall, we're looking at a reduction from 1,375,470 to 1,348,228. That's a difference of $27,242, or a reduction of 2% overall. Taking into consideration the additional position, staffing would be 723,003, or 75.85% of our total budget. I can take any questions on the line items?
Carrie, did you need to ask something? Carrie, did you need to ask something?
Jim was talking about the extra custodian.
Yes.
Right. Was that, that's in the Buildings and Grounds, obviously. You know, how, you know, we keep on hearing from the guys on the ground that are doing the day-to-day operations there, that if they had opportunity to take overtime, they would do that. And perhaps we could save a little instead of adding a whole other position and get into some of those guys overtime if they're willing to take that on, the guys and ladies that are doing that, and would management consider that at all?
I think we have, I mean, we do offer overtime as well, Harry, for those individuals. As you know, that's one of the lowest-paying jobs we have here in the county. We've had a hard time.
Yep.
We've had a hard time recruiting consistent employees for those jobs. This particular position is, it will be allocated to the records retention building. That currently has a contracted cleaner at that point. So there's, we're not going to be taking away overtime from somebody else in order to cover this one. We lower our budget by not going forward with that contractor, though, however. In addition, this additional employee, if we're fully staffed, could act as a floater, which would create greater flexibility. So if somebody takes off, or somebody has something going on, or we have an issue that we have to address, this individual could step up and move around through other facilities in the county.
As part of the contract, we could actually change venue if need be?
Well, we wouldn't use that private contractor anymore.
Can I ask?
All right, thank you.
Yes. Why is that contracted service in?
That's in judicial services budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's not in our budget. They're paying for that as part of the expenses for the records building.
Oh, that's great. So then they would reimburse you?
Well, that would be eliminated from their budget. So there would be a reduction in their budget for those cleaning services. The added custodian would come into our budget.
But wouldn't you be entitled to reimbursement?
From a portion of what? They have, only certain departments are able to put in. So it would be, I think, aging, community development.
Yeah, he's, they're a general fund department.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but for the maintenance of the record retention building, couldn't you draw from Human Services too? Because those Human Services records that are retained...
No, we can, but we have a formula that's, that would come into play. It won't be the full amount for the custodian, because anything in the general fund, we're not able to bill for the Human Services or the Community Development from there. A portion, we should be able to.
Small portions.
A small portion, we'll be able to do.
So would we see, is that it reflected in there in the $18,900?
In the revenue.
That is not.
It's not?
That is not. So it would be in addition. $18,900 is the revenue that we receive from the Office of Community Development for their cleaning services.
Okay. So then, if you go forward with this...
There would be additional amount. We have to determine that based on a formula. It would be small. It would not, it would be a small percentage of the overall cost for that position.
We held off on putting the actual revenue in, because we didn't know if counsel would approve the position or not. So if counsel approves the position, I think it should be offset.
I mean, I know it's not going to be $5 million reimbursement, but yeah.
It won't be much.
Right. Okay.
Did you have a question, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I did. If you're going to sign a full-time person down at the records retention building, what's the degree of effort that's required? I mean, there's a lot of storage space down with records on it. How much floor space do they actually have to clean? That's one question. And then the other thing is, don't you have a full-time person down at 911? Can't they share the duties back and forth?
My department does not cover 911 or any of the prison buildings.
Okay. But is there a, is there a maintenance person or someone at 911 that cleans?
There is, but that comes out of their 260 fund, which is state funding, and it's limited to use by 911.
Their building, so we got a filow.
Right. So that we would not be able to utilize them for other buildings.
We got a silo.
I have a question under expenses, advertising, 550.30. I see you're going to advertise, increase your advertising for the rotunda rentals. How are you going to advertise? Have you given thought to that? I'm sure you have.
Right. We did advertise this year. We took out an ad in the Wedding Planner that's put in the Times Leader and several other publications. And this simple ad has increased our rotunda rentals. I don't have a number, but, for example, coming up in, I think it's this week or the next week, and we have the rotunda, we have an event Friday afternoon, Saturday, and Sunday.
Wow.
Yeah.
Now, are they weddings mostly?
Mostly weddings. That's correct. People that are looking for a non-religious venue. Something like inside now that's getting colder out, that they can come in, have their event, and then, in a nice venue. And since we did all this remodeling, it is a very nice venue to have that at.
And Bill, the fee is $400 for four hours?
Uh, $500.
$500 for four hours?
For three hours. And then we let them in.
You're tougher than me.
I'm sorry. But we, with this stipulation, we can actually, and we have been able to get two events in a Saturday, which means then they can bring the security people in, and that's what this money is for, to compensate the security. And then we don't have to bring, we can keep them there for a couple. And most people do not take three hours.
Mm-hmm. That's wonderful. Now, I haven't seen your ad, but who would they talk to? Would they talk to you? Would they talk to Mr. Parsnick? Who would be that?
Oh, no, they can come, they can, we have, they can send an email to Building and Grounds, and that's checked by the Secretary of Building and Grounds or myself. We monitor the Building and Grounds email. And they could, we ask them to send, that way we have a record when they send it to us, and we establish then contact with them. And then we schedule, people usually come in, they want to look it over, ask questions. And we have a list of the do's and the don'ts. And a lot of people like to come in, sometimes they bring a wedding planner. And then they ask questions, and we answer them. And then they ask for the date of availability. And we ask them, would you like a morning or an afternoon? And then we coordinate with security to bring in the people. So everybody's, of course, goes through security, even on the weekend.
Excellent. This segment?
Yes. Are these weddings only the ceremony, or are they also the receptionist?
Ceremony.
Okay.
Ceremony. Never, no food, no, nothing like that.
Because, I mean, the bar association tried to do catering here once, and it was almost impossible.
No, no. It's strictly, we say strictly the ceremony. We prohibit them from putting any tape on our marble, because then that's something we had to clean off, which could be very cumbersome. And it's usually, they come in, they have a wedding planner, they set up the music. I mean, they've had horse-drawn carriages and all kinds. Some people go really all out. But we make it clear, no smoking, no vaping, and...
We drew up a new contract that was put into effect a few months ago after doing the renovations, keeping in mind, you know, keeping the beauty and all the work that we've done intact. So we have a pretty thorough contract that identifies any problem, potential areas that could result in damage or to the rotunda and the courthouse itself, so...
Are they mostly, are judges that are doing these weddings?
Sometimes. A lot of people, they want the non-religious ceremony, will call upon the judges. We've had district magistrates come in. But to overall answer your question, that's why we, the budget went from 200 to 800, because $695 was for this ad. And with a $500 rental taken consideration, it's paid for itself after.
It sounds like an excellent idea and a wonderful source of revenue. It might be, you know, not huge revenue, but as I always say, every dime helps Luzerne County.
Right. And it gives the, like you said, it gives a venue, and a lot of people do appreciate that.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a correction on one of the line items that's in the budget here, under 540.14 Office Supplies. Those figures may have been mistakenly taken from another budget. Those figures are actually $3,500, and they have not changed from the 2009 adopted to the 2020 requested. So I just want to point that out, counsel.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Could we move, because we have to bring up the entire boiler plant department? If we could just maybe make some, if the entire department could come up, please.
Mr. Bob Dudik, Mechanical Systems Engineer.
Welcome.
This is primarily for any questions you have regarding the boiler plant budget. We do not have any highlighted items, as you will see in your summary sheets, for items that have gone above any increased expenditures above the criteria that we were given. But if you have any questions regarding any of the line items in there, Bob or myself will be happy to answer your questions.
How are those new boilers working?
Great.
Yeah? Looks like you have reduced expenses. That's good.
Yes.
Yeah. You could ask Mr. Pedri. I asked at every single meeting, when were the, when the new boilers were going to be in?
And it's warm in here, too.
I can turn the air on for you.
No, that works really well.
Heat time. The way you see it.
Oh, questions?
It's good. If you ever, if every department came up with reduced expenses, you'd be done in a flash.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Good job.
Do you have any more ideas? Any more ideas?
Working on a DRO next.
Are you? How much do you think you can save?
That'll probably be the most efficient building we own, once we're done.
Okay. You built a good work, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring up our Executive Director of 911, Fred Rosenkrantz.
Good evening.
Hello. Thanks for coming.
So before you, for our 2020 proposed revenue and expenses, we're looking at a net reduction of the general fund obligation of $300. Overall, in our operational expenses, outside of retirement, pension, and healthcare, we're looking at a net cost of $43,500, since 911 reimburses the general fund for administrative fees of $40,000. There's really no net gain or change in the revenue projected next year. The major difference is about $5,000 in interest income. And for the overall expenses, on the 911 side, most of those are taken out of the 260 911 operational budget. And we were able to absorb all of the expenses in those line items for 2020. That's a high-level overview. If anyone has any direct questions. As far as personnel, there are no increases in the position count either in 2020.
Looks good.
Looks really good. Anyone?
We're still working on the, you're going to see Fred again before the end of the year. We're still working on the final contract for our 911 system as well.
Yes, we're still in negotiations with the vendor. We're hopeful to have a contract in front of council by the next work session or the end of November work session.
A question I have on that, and it's not on the budget, but it's on that, is the grant, or the money that we got, was that a result of the work by the consultant?
The $1 million grant, I believe that was a direct result of Red Maverick, the lobbyist.
Maverick Strategies. Maverick Strategies, who worked with her.
Was it a result of the work of your consultant?
No, not that, not that grant.
Okay. They're working on other grants?
We also received a $330,000 LSA grant, which helped alleviate some of the expenses for this project. And most of those funds will be used for the Harris Pond Tower site build.
The consultant was key in...
The consultant helped with that.
Was key of the LSA, so...
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The consultant was a key contributor to the LSA.
Yeah. Yeah, we wrote a lot of the language for that, with the assistance of Michelle Spirit as well.
Okay. When did you put that grant on, the LSA grant?
That was in 2018, and it was awarded.
The grant was awarded in 2018?
Yes.
Prior to the consultant being hired?
No, after. Yes. He wrote some of the language for it. He was hired after that. Remember, he was part of this original study back in 2016. So a lot of this...
You have the different consultants. You're talking about the...
The lobbyist?
Yeah.
No, I was asking if the consultant was the one that was instrumental in getting the million dollars.
The lobbyist was the million dollars, the consultant helped and assisted with the $330,000 LSA grant, along with the legislators.
That was before, that was when he, that was before he was hired in his current capacity, right?
Right.
No, no, he was part of that as well. Because he did the needs assessment study as well. So he assisted with the grant writing.
Right, okay.
In 2018.
But then he was, then there was a new contract with him for implementation.
That was for the contract negotiation.
Right.
Phase of it, which he's currently still doing.
Right.
Over the course of this year as well.
Okay.
Anyone else? Fred, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear regards to that million-dollar grant. You know, our lobbyist was instrumental in that. But if it wasn't for the hard work of our state legislatures, we never would have been there. So every state rep and every state senator in Luzerne County stepped up for that. And I want to be very clear that it was their hard work that pushed us over the edge.
Thank you. Next up?
Next, I'd like to bring up Lucy Morgan, our EMA Director. And I'm sorry, David Almar, our Deputy Director, as well. Before we get started, I'd just like to point out to counsel, I don't know if you had the opportunity to get a revised copy, but under the summary for EMA, the 460 hazmat fund, the second line item in the summary, those numbers are incorrect. I believe they may have been mistakenly taken from the 911 budget. They are actually $382,983 for 2019, both on the revenue expenditure side. And there's $331,009 for the 2020 revenue.
We have.
That's what we have.
Okay.
Yep.
I wasn't sure if that was able to get...
Thank you.
Yep, we have it.
Okay. Go for it, Lucy.
We didn't really have any changes in the 100 account. I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the 100 account. The changes we had were under the 460 account. We asked, the 2019 adopted budget was $31,000. The 2020 requested, we asked for $50,000 in that line item. This is fees that we collect throughout the year from chemical facilities. So it doesn't have anything to do with the 100, the general fund. That is due to a $26,000 grant award, which the expenditures would come out of that line item. So that would just leave us a little cushion to be able to make any other purchases that we needed to under that line item. And then, under the 599.46 machinery and equipment, over $5,000. 2019, we asked for $25,000. 2020, we're asking for $50,000. And that is to allow us to purchase a drone. A drone? The drone will be used for hazardous materials incidents. Instead of putting personnel in harm's way, it will actually have a meter on it so we could take readings from the drone itself.
What kind of meter?
It would be a gas meter. Yeah. So if there was a chemical accident, we'd flow the drone over to get readings instead of putting personnel in harm's way. And again, that comes all from the hazmat fees that we collect throughout the year.
You'll see that we actually reduced the staffing in EMA. There was one position, the...
Emergency planner.
Emergency planner, that was through a grant that we...
Homeland Security Grant.
Homeland Security Grant that we are no longer moving forward. That was a vacant position. And that position was eliminated in 2019.
More questions?
All looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lucy. I'd like to call up Larry Fleischer, County Engineer, to review the road bridge and engineering legislation, please.
Hi. Road and Bridge Department is pretty much the same as the...
Road and Bridge Department is, uh, pretty much stayed the same as, uh, 2019 budget, except for a revenue increase of about, uh, $10,500 for, uh, other vehicles that I believe it's, uh, the task force is using.
Uh, that's reimbursement we'll be getting from the District Attorney's Office for vehicle repairs and maintenance costs.
The other, uh, $8,000 is, uh, revenue we collect from other departments who receive state funding for their vehicles for their repairs. Pretty much, the, um, expenses stay the same, with a slight increase due to minor stuff. Most of that is, uh, wages for 21 union employees and three nonrepresented employees, which are our Division Head, Executive Secretary, and our Road Bridge Supervisor, for the most part. I'll run through the other, um, funds that I handle through Road and Bridge, which would be the 200 Fund, which is the Liquid Fuels Fund, uh, which is two allocations a year, June and December, roughly of about $500,000 to $600,000 each allocation. Whatever comes in, we usually, we're pretty tight to spend all of it at the end of the year. And encompasses a lot of bridge inspection, uh, winter maintenance, uh, anything you could think of that we deal with to pay for the roads, the truck repairs, rock salt, anti-skid, cold patch, or paved patch material. Everything pretty much comes out of there, which leaves us only about, I'd say, half of that for actual hiring a contractor through to a, a road repair. As far as like, uh, for example, Chase Road was done with, uh, state tip money. Foothills was done with, uh, liquid fuels money, and that was it. That's all we could afford to do that year with liquid fuels money. Everything else has to come from some other pot. Uh, for example, the, uh, Bysels Road, it's gonna be done next year. Uh, we got a, uh, PennDOT Multimoto Grant for that project, uh, with some match, some matches comes out of liquid fuels. So, that's a very, uh, tight account. It's really the only count I have currently that I use for, uh, road repair. Um, the other accounts, uh, the 201 count is an Act 44 Bridge Account. That gets one allocation a year. It's mostly for rehab, cause it's not a lot of money, maybe like $150,000 or so, uh, each allocation. The 202 account, uh, is an aid, uh, to Road and Bridges. That's where we get reimbursable. For example, the Chase Road, uh, project comes out of that account. For example, contractor finishes, American Aswell finished the job, they sent the invoice into PennDOT, PennDOT approved it, send it to, to me for approval, and then Harrisburg sends us the money. Once I get the money, they put it into that account, then I send out an invoice that counts payable to pay American Aswell. So, it's really just a wash, the, the account, depending on what project we have going on. Right now, for next year, we, uh, gotta have, um, some of the $2 million match that, uh, we're getting for the bridge on Hillside Road is gonna be coming out of there. That's only gonna be, for next year, only probably gonna be design work and the permitting process, and that probably won't get fully, uh, filled up full of funds until, uh, following year or a year after that for construction. So, the 205 account is, uh, Act 13, that's a bridge account. Uh, there's, there are certain restrictions to that, but that's, we finally got approved last year, or in the middle of last year, for about five or six bridges to use them, when I had saved up, uh, over $3 million to use on those bridges. That in mind, each bridge, depending on what we do to it, costs us roughly eight, nine hundred million, 1.2, depending on each bridge. So, it doesn't last very long, but, uh, we managed to get a lot of bridges done in the next, uh, couple of years, uh, previously. Uh, the 207 account is an Act 89, that's also another bridge account. I think it's two allocations per year of about 150 or 60 or so. So, at the end of the year, you maybe have 300,000, maybe four, and we do with some bridge work with that one. Smaller bridge rehab, or maybe a superstructure replacement, but nothing, uh, major. And then also minor bridge repairs, uh, let's say like, for example, a trust bridge that has wooden planks on the deck, we can do all the wooden planks, get them bought and pasted and repaired, and hire contractors. So, nothing major, uh, about that one. But that, and we could also save, any one of those accounts, we could save up, except for the 202 account. We could save that money, uh, liquid fuels, 44, 13, and 89. But I've been pushing for the last couple of years to use them, save some, and then use them. So, we've been at the limit for the last two years. At the end of the year comes, those accounts are pretty much dry, you know, for use-wise.
And, and, um, the, the citizens who live in the areas where you've been, um, doing due diligence, having to do with the roads and the bridges especially, are very grateful. And I'm very grateful, because I know one of the, um, one of my hallmarks while I've been serving on council has been roads and bridges, and my, I guess my constant questions every meeting about that. But I'm, it, it's just wonderful to drive over these roads and bridges and actually see them improved. And people do, believe it or not, people are grateful. Well, of course, why wouldn't they be grateful? But I, but what I'm saying is, they tell me and they don't tell you, because they had access to me.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, this, this year was, for me, has been pretty busy as far as projects I've done. Next year's plan is to be, uh, even bigger. It's basically double in the amount of bridges that we did last year into next year. We will have at least four or five of them going out, either December and January, and probably construction of another three more, uh, going out, probably midsummer, to be doing on the following year. So, we got grant money from, um, the feds through, uh, Office of Community Development for three bridges on Honey Hole, uh, also a bridge on East County Road in Shukeloff Township. I mean, there's literally like a rattle off seven or eight bridges that will either be, are in design currently, or already out for bid by the end of the year coming into next year. So, it'll be pretty busy next year.
I think I saw Hollow Road somewhere, uh, if that's still in the mix. I don't know if it is. Hollow Road?
Hollow Road, there's, we just finished that one up in, that was, uh, Hollenback Township.
Okay, Hollenback, yes.
Yeah, that just got finished. That's wide open now. That's, that was a superstructure replacement, so that was all.
I didn't really, I didn't know that. Thank you.
And they just, they just started, uh, the contractor will be on, uh, the manager's desk shortly. Uh, contractor wants it to start on Everett Road, uh, that's a trust, uh, 60-foot trust replacement, uh, we're taking down. So, it's, there's a lot of work out there, just in bridges and roads.
Mr. Fleisch?
Yes, sir.
How, how is that money coming in from PennDOT for, from, uh, $5 registration fee?
$5 registration key comes in under the 210 account. Basically, you could use the $5 fee, which is supposedly estimated at two allocations a year of about $600,000, $700,000. The first one we got in June was a lot less, because it wasn't set up, uh, for a full year. We should get a second one this December 6th. I'm hoping for like $700.
Twice a year we get that. We should have a better idea after December's check, to see truly what a six-month period should generate.
My understanding is, that money could be used the same as liquid fuels. But we had decided, in order to get them to give us a match, which they maxed out at $2 million, we would spend $2 million of that money on bridge work, which right now, it's, it's being spent on the design work for West Liberty in Hanover Township, and, uh, Market Street in Salem Township. We sent them a letter, telling them that's what we're gonna do, and we picked a bridge that they approved through District 4, which is the bridge, as soon as you go off the Cross Valley, when you go out to Hillside Farms, that bridge right there, by the rental place. They, that's gonna be a $2 million project in and of itself, just because there's a lot of stuff involved with that. That money will be handled just like any other PennDOT project, just like Chase Road, or the two bridges we did in Kingston Township or Jackson Township. It'll come into the reimbursable account, uh, as they, we bill them. So, we have a design firm once on staff, and they send me an invoice, I send it to PennDOT, PennDOT approves it, and then they send us a check, and we'll put it into that account.
As a previous, we're gonna have pictures before and after to show the public-
Yes.
Where the $5 is going?
Yes, yes. It's, it's definitely worth it.
All right. So, essentially, if you don't have, we don't have the $2, the $5 fee, that bridge isn't gonna get done?
Exactly. That is exactly correct. The bridge will not get done. And it's already, I already have to do, I got a priority, uh, one coating on it, that I have to, uh, fix one of the beams, because by the time that bridge is built, it'll be two, three years from now. So, I have to do something in the meantime to repair that one beam, in order to get it to last, and it doesn't downpose or anything like that. But, uh, yes, it, it'll take three years before the bridge gets done, so it'll also take us two and a half years to get $2 million in allocation, uh, to get equal to $2.
So, there's actually three bridges that are-
The three bridges are gonna get done with the, with the fee and the match.
We've got the fee and the match.
Just curious, and I wouldn't be recommending this, but could that fee be reversed? So, it could be? Yeah, okay.
I have a question around-
Sure.
I wasn't gonna ask the question on that. I have another question too, but-
Sure.
So, as long as we're talking about that, in the Fund 210, which is the $5 fee, there was nothing in the budget from last year, for the 20, for 2019 for that. So, all that income is, is over budget, because according to this, there was zero allocated in the budget from that fee. Nope.
Isn't the book?
Yep, I'm in the book. 2019 adopted budget, zero.
Nothing we allocate in that line, and where we put that in 2019 budget?
Well, it's the line, there's the fund that says $5 local use fee.
Recreation account, because we hadn't broken out a separate account for it, because it wasn't in place yet. But we did anticipate, I believe it may have been-
I think that was to happen, because they asked us to happen.
So, what fund is it in, then?
The 206 fund?
Okay, so I'm looking at 210, which is the one that says $5 fee.
Because, we asked them, and they, we, I think we asked them, and they believe they wanted a separate account for that.
Sure.
And so, we didn't take it back in the, I'm pretty sure, we asked them, and that's, they said they wanted.
So, this year, when we had it finally set up, we said-
Yes.
Separate account, so people can see the money coming in, where it goes, where it was coming from.
So, Fund 205 says Act 13 Bridge Fund. That's where it's, that's where it's found?
No, 206.
206, I'm sorry.
That's in engineering, engine, under engineering. It'll be under their next group of-
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's under the Recreation Fund.
Yep. 206, but it says Act 13 Marcellus Shale.
Yes, I believe that-
So, you budgeted $225,000? Is that what, you budgeted coming in from that? Or does that include what you budgeted from Act 13?
No, I'm mistaken. That, that, the 225 is the budget for the Act 13 Funding for Recreation. Uh, I thought we had it-
220, what did you say, 225?
Yeah, the 225 was the budget last year for the Recreation Fund.
Oh, right, but that was Act 13?
Yeah, no, right, um.
They had almost $3 million in that Act 13 fund that they finally spent, sitting there for years.
No. There was a carryforward in Act 13 of $120, but the, uh, other income of, oh, no, actually, that's the carryforward from last year into this year's budget. Well, if you could get an answer for us, I mean-
I apologize.
I hate to put you on the spot like that, but, I mean, when I saw the fund that said $5 fee, I thought the money, you know, I thought it would have been allocated in there.
That's a new line this year's budget.
Yeah, you can-
I got it. I, I understand that.
You can research.
I'm trying to-
Yeah, you could, you could-
I'm trying to confirm it myself.
You could, uh, you could get back to us with that answer, Mr. O'Neil. That's okay.
Yeah, sure.
I've got two questions.
Here. I think it's, excuse me, I think it's in the Act 89 account, because that's-
What number is that?
That is a 207 fund, and it was under expense reimbursement of $2 million.
Okay.
And that $2 million included what we expected to receive, plus the match at the time, because we didn't have all the details about that.
Yeah, that's not exactly expense reimbursement, though.
No, but we stuck it there until we did align where we were gonna put it. That's where it was. Cause it was, that's part of Act, it's another part of Act 89, is the $5 registration fee. That's why we stuck it there.
Okay.
And then we broke it out into a separate fund.
That's right.
All right, so that's what that is. Okay, Mr. Fleisch, so on Road and Bridge, um, how many vacant positions do you have in that department?
I'm gonna say, I think 12.
You have 12 vacant positions?
11 or 12. There's 21, and I think we currently have nine.
So, you only have nine positions filled out of 21? Okay, and that, cause that was my question on the non, uh, or on the represented wages. You're allocating, uh, $674,000, but, I mean, in 2018, you only used $518,000. And this year to date, well, to October, it was $312,000. So, I mean, you have about half of the department is unfilled. Half of those positions aren't filled. Or closer.
Well, we are, we're hoping to see a change in that. We, we, um, increased the salaries for that position, and we just started advertising those.
At $30,000?
Yes.
That's the equip, that's the equipment operator positions. Those are, those have been our hardest.
Those are the ones that have been vacant. Yeah, but they also require a skill, don't they?
Yes, uh, it, it, well, it requires, it requires the, uh, a C, uh, the acquisition of a CDL license within six months.
Right.
Technically, they don't have to have it when they start, but it's, it's under the premise that they have to have it within six months.
So, you're expecting to fill all those positions on this year, on that new high salary?
It's very difficult.
I don't know that that's gonna, you know, we've advertised it, I believe, uh, twice in the last month. Uh, we've gotten a few more applicants. It hasn't been overwhelming, but we're hoping that-
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering, cause, you know, we're budgeting more, and then we're not getting close to that, so, okay.
Well, quite honestly, uh, there have been, there have been, there have been some, there had been some patching that we've, we've, we've used, um, an outside contractor for, to help us due to the shortage. So, we've been using that funding for that. We've been using, I mean, during the summer months, we have to do a lot of patching, and we just didn't have the staff to do it.
You can't use salary money. Salary money is, uh-
Right, right, right.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that would be other contractual services.
Correct. That's where, that's where, that's where he's referring to.
You kept divert salary money for, for outside contracts? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, a question about that as well?
Uh, as soon as Mr. Urban is finished, Terry, hold on.
Mr. Pedri, is there gonna be any more money in, in community development that could be allocated toward bridges?
We're working on that with, with Andy and his team. That was a, uh, obviously, we, we did a, we, pretty, 2017, 2018, we had a good number with those, with those bridges from where we're at. I don't, I don't, I don't know. We're waiting on the, the maps, with some of the things, with Andy's side of things.
Showing where the low mod income area?
Yeah.
Now, the, the question I had is, is that, you, you're not required to give those allocations to the municipalities, are you? You can use that money in those municipalities yourself for those bridges that fall in a low to mod area?
That's where, that's where, that's where you've been utilizing it for.
Right, right, so you can continue to do that, if you get the maps.
If a county, if a county road or bridge falls within low to moderate income area, we're able to use it in those locations.
Right, rather than giving to, to, cause sometimes we give it to the municipality for-
Correct.
Two, three years, they wouldn't even use the money. We'd just sit there. And you give, I know in the past, and then give them a second allocation, three years later, they haven't used the, used the first allocation. So, if you, if you can put that money to work fixing something in their community for them.
Well, we've been used to quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's a good idea. And then, you also said that you, you reached the $2,000, the $2 million cap on the $5 fee. Is there a cap on that?
Yes.
That's it? So, no more?
There may, there may be future allocations, but-
Maybe, but there's not, so it's-
It's possible.
But right now, the states-
At this point in time, there was a $2 million allocation for each county in the Commonwealth that was set aside.
And that's, and that's reached?
Ours has been reached.
Oh, I said that $2 million is reached.
But we haven't, we haven't, we haven't received a $2 million in the $5 fee yet from the county side. So, if, if the council would remove the $5 fee at this point, we'd have to return, uh, the match, which would be about-
Whatever we-
1.3 million at this point, or something along those lines.
How much you received in the county side?
They, I thought they matched up to $2 million, regardless of how much you took in.
It's up to $2 million, plus we received $2 million.
But you don't have to get $2 million. You just have to spend whatever you get on, on bridges.
Right. But then we would have to return the, the $2 million, the, up, the portion of, that we didn't spend.
Could you give us that, right?
We don't, no, we collect the vehicle fee.
We collect the vehicle fee.
Where you get the reimbursement from the state.
Correct. We, we won't get reimbursement from the state.
Which you're not getting anymore, cause you already got the $2 million.
No, we will be getting that, because we have enough to, am I right on this?
There's some requirement, you don't have to-
We haven't reached the $2 million mark, so I can't say we're gonna, the state-
You had to collect $2 million in the vehicle fee ourselves?
Correct. Is my, is, is my understanding-
To get the match.
To get the match, we have to say-
To get the match, what we had to do is, we had to have plans to appropriate $2 million over the next several years, which we have done with those two bridges that Larry had mentioned, okay? Once we told them that we were committed to those funds for those two bridges, they gave us the appropriation of $2 million in match for the Hillside Road Bridge. That, that's how it works. It wasn't a dollar for dollar. We weren't getting a dollar every time we caught a dollar.
But I'm saying, there, we didn't have to collect $2 million in order to get anything from them, did we?
We did, but we committed to it. We committed to using that $5 fee for $2 million worth of work on those two bridges, uh, divisions-
West Liberty and Marbury Street.
And Marbury Street.
And then they will give us $2 million for the Hillside Road. And then they will give us $2 million for the Hillside Road.
As long as we collect $2 million.
Yeah, there's.
As, 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 as long as we spend $2 million on those bridges, that's the way the arrangement's written.
As long as you spend it.
As long as we spend that $2 million on those two bridges that we've said we were going to do it on, so when that, when those two bridges are completed, probably sometime in the next year or in 2021.
Yes.
Then we'll, we'll have fulfilled our obligation.
Okay.
Okay, Harry, go ahead. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thanks. Well, I kind of forgot what my question was, now I was listening to that discussion. All right, oh, I know what it was. I know, it was, Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Plush, good to see you guys. Just wanna know, you know, going back to the wages here, we're looking at 67, 674,000 this year, and Mr. Plush was talking about how there are full vacancies out of 21. A question, Mr. O'Neil, have, have you approached the bargaining unit to perhaps shrink the number of employees, but increase their salaries significantly? To better output and hopefully have less turnover in that department?
We, we negotiated with the, I'll take this one, Harry, we negotiated with the, they asked me to, to raise the starting salaries. It was a long and arduous negotiation to get, to raise their salaries. I sincerely doubt they're interested in cutting union employees, even if it means a higher salary for other, other positions this time. We only have this new salary in place for about two months, Eddie?
Yeah.
Three, two or three months at this point. So I'm, I, my recommendation would be to roll this salary for a year, and see if we can't get people to come for the higher salary from, from where we're at. The, the goal is to hire every single position here, and we've been continually advertising, and we've been continually reaching out to these peoples as, as well. We're having a hard time getting applicants for this job.
And that's what I need, once you need to pass, asking these, these type of numbers. And I, I think anybody that's a member would be willing to, to work for a higher wage. And might, might be worthwhile going back to the, the, speaking across the table again this next cycle.
We can do that, I think as Mr. Pedri mentioned, that, I think we'd like to see what the, what, what this nets us as far as applicants over the next couple of months, six months or so. And if we don't have any more luck with the increased salary, then possibly we can look at exploring that option.
Mr. O'Neil, we're talking about 137 miles of roads, bridges, plowing, blacktop, we're undermanned. That's the bottom line here.
Yes.
And, I mean.
Well, we gave a few away, though.
I mean, backhoe operator, I saw this big thing last year, all the responsibility, CDL, this and that, 1201 an hour. Not gonna get somebody for 1201 an hour. I mean, we're undermanned, we gotta hire people. I mean, nine guys taking all that roads? Come on, what are we doing, talking about here? We gotta hire people.
You gotta hire people at a living wage, you can't raise a family farm at 20 grand a year. That's where the issue is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can't.
The number, that, the, the number needs to be, listen, the number needs to be negotiated with the union, from, from where we're at. It was a, it was a long pro, I, I don't wanna get into collective partners, I would say it was a long process to get to that $30,000 number. From, from where, I sincerely doubt the union's interested in, in losing positions. However, if council would like to allocate more money into the salary line, and, and we, I'll, I'll go back to the table at another time, no problem. I, we need people, we, we need, listen, I, I think everybody's agreement, we need equipment operators. And the, the $24,000 salary wasn't getting anybody, we, we just got to 30,000. If, if, if I go back to raise it, if, if we go back to, I, I can't, I can't, I can't raise that starting salary without negotiating with the union.
Not, and Harry, if I may add to that.
Sure.
I don't know about you, I, I don't wanna be part of a nine-member road crew, having to do all of that work. I mean, as Bob said, we own a heck of a lot of roads and bridges in this county, and, you know, expecting people to do twice the amount of work on any salary is too much to ask, too much to ask for working people, Harry, just too much.
Well, it's definitely not getting done now, at the wages we're paying, so, I mean, I think management's doing in the right direction there, to increase those wages. But again, I think we're just looking at efficiency here, how can we do the task, and make sure people get, get paid, compensated fairly? Anyway, just food for thought, I know it's not necessarily the, the place to make that decision, but nonetheless, it's been an ongoing problem for years.
Well, I think our, I think our road crew's doing an amazing job with the, the human resources they have to work with. And I thank them very, very much, and I just am amazed at the thought of having to ask these people to do more. I, I, I just don't see it. I know that's popular today in the United States of America, however, I resist that in Loseran County.
I would say it's refreshing, I mean.
I'm not saying more, I'm just saying compensate fairly, your debt turnover, because you can't, nobody's gonna work for that money, and we don't know that. Everybody at the table, everybody watching knows that. It's, it's getting harder and harder to keep folks like that.
I would say it's refreshing, you know, for, for years, I've been advocating to, to raise some salaries in the county, because we can't keep individuals. To have council come around and say that as well, I, I appreciate it, and that's something that we're gonna be working on.
Great, and I agree with your last statement, Harry.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else from Mr. Plush? Mr. Plush has taken you around the globe, and thank you for your patience.
When it comes to plowing, do you have, you have adequate people to plow? And you have agreements, you have agreements with other municipalities that do part of your roads?
I would say, cross your fingers just enough, but it does tax these guys to the limit. I mean, you could ask our road supervisor, there's some guys who are working long shifts for a couple days on a bad snowstorm, it's, it's taxing on them. Depending on the, the guy who it is, it's, for example, if he doesn't have any kids, no big deal, or he's not home. He might not be home for two days, by the time it's all done, and he's gotta go back, and again, the interstate's one thing, 309's another. You know, bigger roads, state roads are different than East County Road with farm fields on both sides, it drifts, and you gotta go back out there, and you gotta check it the next day, you say, oh, it's sunny out, you know, guys are taking a break, no, they're out there again. So it, it's tough on them. I say, we, we trying to get even a contractor to help us out on case of an emergency, but it, they're difficult too. The state's in the same boat, they're looking to hire guys, and we're competing with them, and they're offering more, so it's, it's tough.
What's the selling rate for one of these people if they were working outside the county?
They're probably making, I'd say they're making at least 30 some bucks an hour. That'd be high twenties, thirties, just for a guy who drives a truck with a plow. I mean, we're not, we're not even close to that. Unfortunately.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
I guess I'll move on to engineering.
Yes, sir.
Which, engineering, our revenue source is our review of subdivisions, which we do in-house, depending on the size. And it generates about 40,000 a year, it's pretty, been pretty consistent. Sometimes when the housing boom hits, it might go up to 50, but 40 is probably a good guess. And the expenditures are, obviously are consulting that we need done, and our salaries for myself and three other staff engineers. And one of our staff engineers handles the building and grounds department as a supervisor, so. Nothing's pretty much consistent with engineering as far as last year to this year. The other accounts under that division would be the capital projects, would be 194 fund. Pretty much the 2020 figure represents any uncompleted 2018, 2019 projects, and our upcoming 20 to 21 projects, or 22 projects. That's everything, cross your fingers we can get everything done, most likely some projects linger on for other issues, so. But we need to have at least the funds available to us. The 208 fund, the energy savings fund, the balance, that's pretty much what's left, the 2.9 million in that account. Largest chunk of that will go to the courthouse window replacement project, which the bids will be due December 3rd. And we just had a pre-vent meeting today on it. It's gonna be a pretty involved project. Once awarded, it'll probably last up until this time next year, all said and done, with the lead times on the windows and all the issues they'll, they'll have with the outside and inside installation. And it'll be a pretty aggressive project, but that's usually the chunk of that money. The 209 account was a grant that we got from Senator Yurchuk had set us up for, for $200,000 to do some design work. And for the Nanticoast, West Nanticoast Bridge, we got $200,000 this year, we spent about 50 or maybe a little bit more or so, and we'll spend the other 150 next year, with, we'll have to get some work on the bridge done. Right now, we're probably gonna have to downpost it in order to keep it functional. And then we have our five dollar, the 210 fund, just the five dollar fee collection, and we estimate our collections for next year will be about 1.4. And the 3,000, I believe, is for interest, sits there. And the last one would be the 350 account for the airport, which is pretty much a lot of state grants and federal grants. There's two different sections of that. Some, the state will do some work, or some projects, which the feds won't do, and the feds won't do all projects, so. Federal's first requirement was to complete the master plan, which a draft will be issued sometime in the end of December, which will review, and we will have a meeting in January to confirm it, and once the FAA signs off on it, and by February, we should have the remaining grants coming in for that, which includes projects like the taxiway restoration, the fuel system upgrade, new, uh, aboveground tank and pumping system. And the state has also agreed to do a hanger replacement, which requires more of a match on our part, but we're thinking maybe we can get some outside agencies to, put the businesses to put towards the hanger, being that they will get the most use out of it, other than us. So, if there's any questions on those accounts?
Okay, you can move on now, two questions.
The only other one, I think, is the rec fund, Marcellus Shale one, is the only one that's. Pretty much spending everything that's coming in for that, I think, is allocated for something.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Solid waste.
So, yeah, we have a solid waste, and just, just a correction, our engineering staff, we have two, I have two county engineers and two staff engineers. Just to, I'm, I wanna correct that. Larry and Mr. McIntosh, who oversees building grounds, Larry oversees road and bridge. Okay. I'd like to call up Beth and Artie, our solid waste coordinator, solid waste management coordinator. Another large department we have here in operational services, that does a great job. Staffing this on her own and taking care of all the day-to-day tasks. There have been few changes in here, our solid waste license fees have gone up a slight bit. That's based simply on trending that we've seen over the last couple of years. We increased that amount, that's the fees that come in from the landfills for the collection of refuse. And our other contractual services, we budgeted due to the increased revenues. So that's a non-general fund account, there is no burden on the general fund, that is zeroed out. And we basically took those increases and put them into contractual services on the expenditure side.
Okay, questions?
Beth, when's your tire recycling contract up for renewal?
We will renew it next year. I'm sorry?
RFP?
No, we piggy, we piggyback on the state contract.
Oh, you do?
Mm-hmm.
Where can I get a copy of that state contract?
I'll look through my files, see what I can find for you.
You send it to the clerk, she'll send it to me, please.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you do the, the radio commercials for the tires, the recycled tires? That is a wonderful commercial. Thank you. I wanna tell you, you know, it sounded like your voice, but I wasn't absolutely positively. Do you get a lot of tires for recycling? We exceeded this year. We were expecting about 12,000, we got well over 16,000, so. We had a great year. Wow. We had a very, very good year. Good job. Thank you. Good job.
All the tires are collected, that, that less many that end up on the side of the road, as many as you know.
Absolutely.
Mr. German?
Yes.
I had the privilege of working with Beth at the recent TV recycling up in Hazelnut, the Water Authority. And, and she's a workhorse, I mean, make no doubt about it, I mean, she was right in there, moving these big TVs around, like. So, yeah, she was busy all day, you're getting every penny that we're paying her to do this, I mean. Thank, I wish I had a, a bunch of them like her, but.
You're not taking her, she's sick.
Thank you very much.
I'm not driving a truck, okay?
All your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Unless there are questions, oh yes, Harry, go ahead, go for it.
Hey, Beth, welcome back.
Thank you.
Just wanna know, what's, what's the status, what's the movement in the Harrisburg about electronics slash TV recycling? That is an ongoing painful issue up here, any, any traction down there?
No. No, there has been absolutely no movement on it. The state hasn't done anything, manufacturers haven't done anything, and anything that has gone forward has fallen flat. So as far as I know, through the organizations that I've been working with, there has been no progress at all. We will continue to, Harry, we're gonna continue to offer the programs to the towns like we have in the past. We will offer them financial assistance for the electronics, we will offer them financial assistance for the paper shredding, and this year, we started a heavy education campaign with the towns for recycling, in as much as cleaning up their recycling and advertising. And we're gonna, going to continue it again next year.
That's, yeah, we talked about that last year at this time, thank you for doing that, and for your, I, I just think there's still massive ignorance about there, about recycling. You just don't, it's, it's good to go, it's just not the case, so, thanks. Yeah, the TVs, I hope we can really bring more awareness to that, because it's a big issue, but thank you, thanks for all you do.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Guess that's it, Beth, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
The last fund that we have in our division for review is Marcellus Shale, Act 13 Recreation Funding. And based on the shoes allocation, we have increased the, you know, revenues and expenditures. I will tell you that we have several projects that are, are in the works right now for doing remediation work and upkeep to the levee. The biggest one right now is, is out for bid, it, it involves regrouting of all of the areas along Millennium Circle and the North Hampton Portal. It also is gonna involve repair work, which is gonna be fairly extensive to many of the steps and railings, and also a acid cleaning of, of a lot of the limestone that you see all up and down River Street that has become tarnished and stained. So we have a large RFP out for that, and we've combined all those, all those items into that RFP. So we're hoping to get that underway, probably early spring.
Harry, do you have a question? I thought I heard you say something.
Well, I, just a comment, hey, I mean, a lot of people downtown are really grateful for getting that real common back on track, so. Good job too, Jane, of the committee, in that, that money allocation there.
Oh, yeah.
For that 13, so, you know, again, tip of the hat, a lot of happy people downtown.
A lot of, a lot of people, going to be happy people when they apply for the grants for the gypsy moth, I, I shouldn't call it that, wood boring infestation remediation work that they desperately need. But thank you, Harry, that was good partnering with you on that, and I appreciate it.
Right on the mark, thank you, Jane.
Okay, I would just like to say thank you for the summary on the energy savings, that's really, really an eye-opener, to see how much we saved on utilities, just because of the energy savings.
That's, that's based on our budget savings, we're, we're kinda monitoring that, the, just so, just, as most of you recall, there is going to be a formal audit conducted by McCord that should be starting within the next month, that will give a much higher level of detail to the amount of savings that we've actually realized since. realized since this was implemented last October. So that obviously will be forwarded to all members of council upon your seat.
That's great. Can you also get a star on your chart for double signing here?
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think we're all questioned out, Ed. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now we have, now it's your turn. Public comment. Do we have anyone who's, Brian, is this? Oh, yes, Brian. You completed, do you have public comment now?
Nothing.
Oh, no. How about anyone else? Yes, sir. Just state your name for the record. End town, I'm sorry.
Jason Carr, Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania. Sitting here tonight, listening, I still don't think some of council members understand that the taxpayers of Luzerne County are exhausted of being taxed. Whether it's a five dollar a year registration fee for your car, or a five dollar a month rain tax fee, or a five percent Luzerne County increase in your property tax bill, Luzerne County citizens are exhausted of being taxed. And some of you lost your jobs over it. So please understand, it's insulting to sit here and listen to it justify taxing people. It's exhausting. But I guess that's the democratic mindset down here that's run the county into the ground. That's why in 2020, there's a Republican majority. And Mr. Schnee, I think you're lucky that you got both sides of the ticket, because I don't think you'd be sitting there in 2020.
Wait, do you have a question?
Okay?
Do you have a question?
I certainly do. Mr. Pedry, if I could have two. No, stop inter, don't interrupt me. I want to talk to Mr. Pedry.
Don't take cheap shots at me.
I think you're lucky.
I'm telling you right now, don't do that.
Don't tell me. You're lucky.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
I'm telling you, you're lucky.
Order, please.
If I have a question, I'll answer your question.
Order. State your question and then would you please be seated so whomever can.
Mr. Pedry. Do you think possibly solving the problem with the, the snowplows, where you could possibly, is it, is it a possible solution where you could pay someone twenty-five dollars an hour with a defined contribution plan with a two thousand dollar copay for deductibles? Is that, is that a possible solution?
Are you asking me to change the union contract or have to be negotiated with FASME?
Something to consider. It seems like that's an easy solution, to pay somebody a higher amount of money and defer the, the long-term contributions of the taxpayers.
I can't, I can't really get into collective bargaining stuff, but something like that would have to be negotiated with, with the union.
Right. What, have you met it all privately with Mr. Albert regarding the state police station?
Me?
Yes.
No.
No, okay. What would be the benefits to the Luzerne County taxpayers for the county to offer alerta for the police station where the developer actually has a twenty-year guaranteed lease contract with the state? Would there be any benefits to that?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I don't know. I'm, I.
What's your professional opinion? You're the manager of the county.
I'm not aware of any benefits. I think, I leave it up to Mr. Albert and the state to talk about what they need to present. I think they're going to be doing that in January.
Okay, very good. If I may, what dynamics changed in the coroner's office where there was one person receiving two hours of overtime per day? And then it became public that they were receiving it? And then you have now asked the new coroner, or you said in the last meeting, two meetings ago, that you were gonna ask them to stop? What dynamics changed in the department for them to stop receiving the overtime?
We now have full staff, so we have coverage during the day.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Morelli.
Sir, I just want to make a comment and, you know, you mentioned before about taxes and I totally respect that, I think everybody else out there does. But, you know, it's one thing to just say, cut taxes, but what we provide in the county, every government, services. And so I'm gonna throw it back to you, I'm gonna throw it back to anybody else who ran and said they're not gonna raise taxes ever. What services do you want cut? We're, we're voting on a brand-new 911 center or call center, spending a lot of money for safety, security in the county to make it better. Are you for that or not? If you're for it, then it's gonna raise taxes because that's a lot of money put into it. Where would you want it cut? We talked about roads and bridges. Do you want some of those bridges not replaced? Be specific. It's easy to say, cut. I want people, and I'm gonna hold people cannibal coming forward when I leave here, who said they don't want anything. I want to know which services you want cut. It's easy to say, no taxes. I want to know specifically, I want people to say to the public out there, which services they want cut? And where the money's gonna come from?
Let's have the debate, Mr. Morelli. If, for example, do you want to go to a, why is it not realistic for the county to go to a defined contribution plan rather than a defined benefit plan?
Again, let's break down the numbers then. Show, show me how this, show me the savings. That's a whole nother thing. I'm talking here, if, if you're gonna come up with specifics, let's break down the numbers.
Right.
Again, I'm talking, if you want to show, if you have a better way and you could back it up with numbers, that's doable, tell me the services you want cut. No, no more just flat taxes.
Why don't we stop, why don't we stop longevity bonuses?
I want to know specific services you want to be cut.
I just, I just said something. Why don't we stop longevity bonuses?
Mr. Carr, thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli. I just want to make one thing clear before we, unless, I'm sorry. Is anyone else, yes, Mr. Griffin?
One real quick thing.
Yes?
On the Newport Township property that was brought up about getting, giving that to Newport Township, although I drove by that property, it's definitely a safety hazard and it needs to be ripped down. And I applaud Newport Township for actually coming up with an idea to take that property away. However, the person who owns that property also owns ten other properties in the county and is delinquent on several of them. He owns two others that are not delinquent in taxes. And I understand, I understand the bankruptcy issues and all of that. My concern is, is there, I think the county should start putting the lien against the man who owns that property. If we're going to lose five thousand dollars, at some point, he's either gonna sell that property that he actually owns that doesn't have any taxes on it, then maybe we can recoup some of that money. If it was just a one property guy, but this person owns multiple properties in this county, ten of them actually, and of those ten, eight of them are delinquent to the tune of almost ten thousand dollars in back taxes that he owes the county, on top of the one that Newport Township has. I think maybe we look at a way that we can go after him for that money, even though Newport Township's taken over the property, put a lien against him so we could try and recoup some of that funding, because it would be very, very helpful to do that, instead of just losing five thousand dollars of tax money. I think the resolution for this SCI retreat should have been on the special meeting agenda and possibly we could have got that done earlier and then it would have carried a little bit more weight than waiting until after the 21st meeting. I certainly think everybody's probably gonna be at that meeting for the 21st. But if you would have passed that resolution on the, when you did the Whitehaven Resolution, possibly you would have had that into the governor already. And then you could stand up there instead of saying, we're going to send one, now you've already sent it. So that would have been helpful. The approval for the voting machines, possibly, we could put that off until next year as well. Seems how, there was a statement made that the next year, council needs to approve the alerta. Maybe next year's council needs to approve what funding we approved for the voting machines as well. And lastly, and to Mr. Morelli's point is, you know, cutting services isn't the issue, it's the wasteful spending that's the issue. That's really the issue. I mean, nobody wants to cut any services. At least I don't want to cut services. I certainly want to cut people's pays. They're getting way more money than they're supposed to get. I think that's appropriate. I don't think a two percent merit increase is appropriate for some employees of this county across the board when they've gotten one every year for the past five. I don't think that's appropriate. So I don't think it's about cutting services. I think about being more prudent with our money. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
You know, governments of all sizes and levels always talk about their job is, is to provide a healthy environment and safety for its citizens. On the other hand, I've heard, and I don't know if it were lies, excuses, or the truth, that private property that is used by the public cannot have any action taken to prevent serious injury or death. I live on the west side. It's taken us seven years of constant complaining to Edwardsville, now I'm gonna get harassed again. Let's say North Hampton Street, also called Main Street, depending which side of the street you live on, welcome to Pennsyltucky. There's 200 yards that have suffered through hundreds, literally hundreds of hospitalizations because of the lack of visibility, the lack of crosswalk demarcations, the lack of pen dot curbing, sidewalks that look like the Rocky Mountains, and most importantly, for all concerned, both pedestrians and drivers, trees that have overhung not only the sidewalk, but into the street, which is a pen dot thoroughfare, for seven years. You know what it took to get most of those trees cut back last week? A threat to blow up the street so that somebody, to do something. The issue seems to be, and maybe it's not true, just an urban legend, that in Pennsylvania, we as municipalities cannot force any developer to do anything when it involves public safety. I'd wish some honest lawyer, if I could find, could research this and tell us whether in fact that's true or not. And if not, you know, if we really value our lives and those of our friends and neighbors, then the legislature at the state level must do something. There's a road behind Burger King, an Auto Parts Place, and Taco Bell. If you go in the back road, you're lucky to survive. We've had people in, gone to the hospitalization, we had people going through windshields and, and this is just when I'm walking down the street twice a week. I actually saw two cases, and you figure, how many minutes do I go by there a week? Two cases where a tow truck had to pull a car out of a pothole, and there are five major ones, one of which is large enough that you can now fit a casket in. And it's yight deep, folks.
Sir, excuse me. Is this a county-owned road you're talking about?
No, it's not a county-owned road, but I'm wishing that someone somewhere could put some kind of pressure on someone. If it's a lot that needs to be changed in Harrisburg, then I'm hoping for a resolution to force, at least raise the issue. We have roads that are just plain unsafe. When we have a couple hundred people getting hurt a year, you know, that's not small potatoes.
And I, and I think, sir, your time is up, but I.
Fine.
I do take that very seriously and I am just hoping that maybe some state representatives or their staff may be tuning in tonight and I think you've made a very good appeal to them and I thank you for doing that.
I hope something happens.
I hope so too. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'd like to say something. I just want to reassure the public that we have not voted for a tax increase. Some people seem to think that it's a done deal. No, we have not voted for a tax increase. Well, that's why we've been here since about, well, I want to say nine, no, ten minutes after seven, and it's now almost 9:30. Now, we've spent maybe, what, two hours, two hours fifteen, twenty minutes going line by line in the budget within it, not, not because we're bored and we have nothing else to do, but because we're trying to find ways to cut the budget and save, excuse me, taxpayers' money. There was a headline in the newspaper a few weeks ago about a tax increase that is absolutely true. The manager proposed it. You'd probably be amazed at the number of people who have come up to me, emailed me, texted me and said, Jane, why are you raising taxes? And my answer is, we haven't decided to raise taxes. That's something proposed by the manager, but it's up to the council. That's our responsibility to approve the budget. So I hope finally I've set that to rest and I hope people are still tuning in and being able to understand that and tell their friends and family. County council works very hard every year during budget season to cut the budget and we continue to do so. And it's been my pleasure tonight to be sitting in for Mr. McInley, who is at a family, excuse me, a family event. Thank you for the opportunity. May I have an?
Motion.
Motion? How about a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.